Oh, for the past forty-five minutes. No, actually, I, I, uh, no, no, I, I, I said at the, uh, the meeting and then I took my dog for a walk.
That could have been trouble.
Yeah.
Though we haven't heard his voice nearly as much as we would like to.
We had Scott Bibler.
All right, we'll go ahead and get rolling tonight. I think we've got everybody here. So, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our October fifth, two thousand twenty Burlington City Council Work Session. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, this meeting is being held via the Zoom platform. It's a meeting and streaming live on the city of Burlington's YouTube page at www.youtube.com/COBNC. Please note this meeting is being recorded. If anyone is having technical or connection difficulties, please contact our public information specialist, John Vernon, at three-three-six-five-one-three-five-four-four-zero for support. For staff comments or to address the city council or staff during the meeting, when appropriate, please indicate to you wish to do so, raise hand feature or star nine, depending on how you're joining us, whether it's Zoom or by phone, and our meeting host, IT Director Scott Bibler, will notify me that you wish to speak. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Baltoodis, and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
Staff presenting, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City Manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City Attorney David Huffman.
Here.
Interim City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly.
Yeah.
Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
Yes, good evening.
Planning Manager, or sorry, Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun.
Here.
Planning Manager Conrad Almeado.
Here.
Community Engagement Manager Morgan Laster. Morgan, I missed you.
Here.
There we go. Animal Services Director Jessica Arias.
Here.
All right, we'll begin with item A on our agenda, the Home Program Funds Overdue. I'd like to recognize our Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Tonight, we have Michael Blair with us, and I'm going to introduce him in just a second. But with the departure of the Community Development Administrator, the Planning Department has contracted with the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, or PTRC, as most of us are familiar with, to provide professional and technical support for our community development efforts. PTRC works with local governments in our region on community development items and many other programs. They are currently working on a few housing programs in the Burlington area already. Mr. Michael Blair is the Director of Community Development for PTRC and has prepared information in a presentation about the use of home funds to assist affordable housing in Burlington. The presentation includes several options for use of home funds, and I'll let Michael go into those additional details. But welcome, Michael, and Michael and his staff has been, have been very helpful in the last couple of weeks already, helping us pick up and keep going forward with, uh, with Beans Down staff members. And Michael, thank you, and I'll turn that over to you.
Welcome. Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that. I guess, good evening, Council and Mayor. Again, Michael Blair, Community Development Director for the Piedmont Triad Regional Council. I'm going to start the share screen for the presentation, and everybody keep their fingers crossed. I will mine. So, let's, let's go here. So. Can everybody see the presentation? Yeah, it looks like we've got that up. Community Development Home Funds. Okay. Well, again, the PT, the PTRC runs a basically rehab weatherization and other housing programs, actually in a fourteen, fifteen county area now. We're outside of our borders. We are all over the place, and actually, the first slide that we have is a map of my department's programs. You can see the outline of the PTRC. You can see Alamance County there on the right side of the screen. It's kind of probably hard to read the legend here, but different, the, the acronyms that are in there for Alamance County, for instance, is the Essential Single Family Rehab Program, which includes rehabbing houses inside the city of Burlington for the state North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, as well as the rest of the county, as well as the Weatherization Assistance Program, which runs throughout the entire county, including the inside of Burlington. I'm sorry, that hurts. As you can see, in some counties, we have just a mixture of the different types of programs. Every county is a little different. Some counties are standalone, but actually, in Alamance, we've been working here pretty heavily since, actually, two thousand and fourteen. We helped with the Alamance County CBG grant that they were finishing up, along with the city of Meven had a recovery grant that we helped. And from that spurred all of these other programs that we now administer. So, home funds, and what we're going to be talking about here is really for housing rehabilitation. That's homeowner or rental. Affordable housing development, that could be tax credit properties, like you may be familiar with. These are properties that are financed through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, and sometimes home program funds, like you have access through to, through the Greensboro Consortium, can be used to help make those projects more competitive, sometimes by helping them lower their, their requests for tax credits. There's different uses in the affordable housing development, but we can talk about that a little bit, too. And then down payment assistance, which basically helps income-qualified people that are interested in buying a home actually be able to afford purchase of a home. And, you know, basically, for homeownership purposes, which I think we all agree isn't necessarily right for everybody all the time, but for some people, it's the perfect thing to stabilize a life and create wealth for their families. Housing rehabilitation, and, and I'm starting off here with the slide that just kind of talks about what's the goals of housing rehabilitation. Well, uh, you know, you start off with the person that owns the home, okay? Usually elderly, disabled own the home for a long time, or a family with children, young children that has lead, lead hazards in the household, that's low income, maybe a single-parent household. It depends. Every household's different. Everybody, the arrangements of households run a variety of, of areas, as you all know. Now, basically, there's also community benefits from a rehabilitation program. You are basically preserving affordable housing stock in your community. You have access to these funds, which most communities do not have access to these funds. Only larger communities, a lot of the rural areas, don't have anything like that, except for like the Housing Finance Agency, and it's up to organizations like us to try and get that money into those communities. But basically, you're, you're maintaining the affordable housing stock. So, you know, as, as houses get older, they fall into disrepair. If you do not do something, they can oftentimes be condemned. That doesn't help the neighborhood. It doesn't help the people living there. It doesn't help the people living next door. But it basically removes unhealthy property conditions. Almost every rehab program and home program, which is what we're talking about here, requires to bring a house basically up to code. You can't bring everything up to code, but everything you can bring up to code and any sorts of hazard have to be mitigated. And it also promotes neighborhood stability. There have been plenty of studies that have shown that when you start, and this has happened to us in some of our rural areas a few times, actually, Gibsonville is a good case. We started rehab on two houses in that neighborhood, and then all of a sudden, the people that lived around there, a couple of them applied, which is great, and they got services too. But some other folks didn't apply, but they went and started working on their own homes. And there are plenty of studies that show that when you fix one or two things up in an area, it, it blossoms from there, and it oftentimes make rental properties can be improved too, because they don't want to be the one house that doesn't look as good as it can in that street. So it does that, and it helps seniors age in place. I mean, it's a lot less expensive for society, essentially, for people to be able to stay in their homes as long as possible. When they leave, oftentimes, a house can go into disrepair, it can be condemned, it can be turned into a rental and then not necessarily maintained. There's lots of things that can happen. So it's better for the person to be able to stay where they've lived for thirty or forty or fifty years, you know, psychologically and emotionally, but it's also better for the neighborhood, too. And then, you know, what are the considerations? You have to think, who, who lives in Burlington? Who lives in the rest of Alamance County? What are the characteristics of the housing stock? How old is the housing stock? You know, when was the, in certain neighborhoods, what's the average age of homes? What's the average conditions? And then we think about other investments and initiatives, and we have automatic lights that turn off. So if I got too dark, I might have to turn the lights back on. But anyway, we, you know, we have the, the ESFR, the Essential Single Family Rehab that's available in Burlington. We have the Weatherization Program. But a lot of times, we have to tell people no. The reason we have to tell people no is both of those programs have limits and rules associated with them, with what you can do. Like with weatherization, if somebody's got a leaking roof or some other code violations, we can't replace their heating and air or their HVAC. We can't put insulation in a leaky roof. We can't work on a house that has dangerous electricity or plumbing. So when you think about what's going on, and there's so many different people working on these projects, if you all of a sudden get kind of a singular focus, you can do a lot more in a place than you can when you're working independently and in silos. And this is a great example of what we're doing now, or trying to do, stop busting a silo essentially, and making things work for everybody as best it can. Next slide is the forms of investment. I have CDBG here, too, but both the Home Program and the Community Development Block Grant can be loans or grants when it comes to homeowner rehabilitation for an income-eligible homeowner. And then examples of the policies, the Housing Finance Agency, which is our primary, we're the primary grantee for them in the state, basically has a forgivable loan. They file a note and deed, and that's essentially to keep the house from being flipped. You know, we fix it up, and we don't want somebody to turn around and sell it, and they don't either. But it does, it's a lot easier to get a person on a fixed income to accept those terms than it is to say you've got a loan payment every month, for instance. They've already on a fixed income. They might say, I can do without that, that heat, heat pump working well anymore, you know, because that, at least that doesn't cost me that much. Or they can't relate to the increased energy usage to cost as opposed to putting out a check to somebody. But, um, and then the Surrey Home Consortium, which we administer, we adopted their policy, and our board there adopted that policy, because they realized we were able to do a lot more when we use those types of rules. It's just easier to get homeowners to accept the terms. One of the downsides is it does kind of limit the program income that's PI there, because you don't have monthly payments on it. But if somebody does, let's say, leave before a period of note and deed is finished, you do get paid, actually. So, you know, there is, there is that, but it's not the, the typical income you get from a loan program. And then the USDA is a one percent loan for twenty years. That can't be used directly in Burlington. That can be used in most of Alamance County surrounding Burlington. And that's not very, basically, their median productivity. When you have, when you try to make these types of programs easily accessible for elderly and disabled people that own their own home, or other folks that own their own home, it makes, they have limited means at that time. It just makes it a lot easier when we're doing it the way the NCHFA does it, the way we do it. We end up, we're going to end up doing almost eighty houses we're going to rehab this coming year, this current year that we're in. I don't think that maybe Charlotte rehabs more houses than we do. I don't think anybody else even comes close. So, that, that's the way that works. So, does anybody have any questions about, you know, the types of the NCHFA notes and deeds, or how that, that functions, or how a loan program functions? I mean, if, or are you kind of, it's pretty clear, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Any questions from Council right now? All right, keep on rolling.
Excuse me, is that program specifically for individuals living in their homes, or is that cannot be used by any people, any other people who are doing investments, renovations of, of, of properties?
For the Housing Finance Agency, it's homeowner occupied only. For that USDA program, it's homeowner occupied only. So you have to own the home, and you have to live in it.
Okay.
Any other council questions? All right, Michael. Okay, thank you. And then our next slide. There we go. And basically, the, the Housing Finance Agency's Essential Single Family Rehab has now turned, it's a thirty thousand dollar program. Now, we can, basically, we have to bring a house up to code and to their standards for thirty thousand dollars. And when you think about that, it sounds like a lot, but it's really not. If you have a roof, they need a ramp, they need a new service change for their electric, they need plumbing repairs, they have foundation repairs, and there might be other issues in the house. Each one of those things I just nail said is about five thousand dollars a pop. So, major systems, when they're going on a house, we have to be pretty selective and call a lot of houses beyond repair with this program. We look at a hundred houses, we defer, you know, fifty of them because of that. One thing that you can add, or we could add here, is for pre-seventy-eight houses, and what we're really talking about is usually houses built in the late fifties to the mid-sixties. Oftentimes have lead-based hazards in them with the, the windows, the doors, a lot of exterior, you know, paint along the, the outside of the house. So, what, if it's a pre-seventy-eight with a lead-based paint test, it would be forty thousand dollars. And again, what we'd recommend is a forgivable or prorating no-interest loan with a ten-year period. Mainly because it, it will make it more productive, and you, as a city, will be able to touch more homes in the neighborhoods you want to try to help than you can doing it the other, the other ways. And actually, Mike or Nolan could probably comment on that better than I could, but, you know, there have been programs in like Green, when I was in Greensboro, for instance, we made it really hard. They had a lot of underwriting that they did. They had a loan committee. They had a loan-to-value ratio calculation. They did a credit check during the middle of the, of the recession. So what happened is we didn't end up really, and it was a loan, low interest, a loan and a grant. We didn't really do any jobs because no one could, could convince themselves they wanted to take on more debt in the midst of a downturn. So, you know, and, and you also have to remember about these policies, the, the council sets these policies or accepts these policies and sets them. They can always be amended. They can always be changed. That's the beauty of these programs. As long as you're within the HUD rules, you can, you have a lot of flexibility to design your programs the way you want to see it get out into the community and help the people that are eligible for the programs. So, conveyance to family members, I had to put that in there because oftentimes with elderly homeowners, somebody could pass away within that period before the loan has been forgiven. That does happen periodically. It's usually not that hard of a deal to fix, because a lot of times you have a younger sibling that's still eligible that could move into it, or, or what, it, it just, it's not that hard to work out. We have that happen with our NCHFA program a couple of times a year with that many jobs that we're doing. So it doesn't happen very often, but when it does, it's a resolvable situation. The state doesn't want the houses that we put the ESFR money in, just like the city of Burlington doesn't want to take the houses of people that you rehab with your funds. You know, it's there to improve the community. You know, we're not in the repo business. But, so then, whoops, I'm sorry. Okay. And does anybody have any questions about the concepts that I just talked about? I mean, again, that thirty thousand, we can do a lot of houses and bring them up to code, but we kind of get stuck on the pre-seventy-eights because of that extra lead work usually adds five to ten thousand dollars to the, to the job, because all the other problems are there, plus the lead work that you have to do. And that's usually by a lead-certified contractor. We've got several of those in our pool. But the cost is usually a little higher than when you have a non-lead house. Does anybody have any questions kind of on the concept that you have in front of you here? Questions from folks? All right, I think we're safe to keep going. All right. This is fun. And it's working. The technology has worked so far, and I'm really pleased with that. So. All right, the next slide is rental rehabilitation. And, you know, we did, talking about this, there are several single-family homes in, in neighborhoods around, you know, around in, in Burlington that could use the assistance. A lot of times, people, not all landlords are, you know, from It's a Wonderful Life, you know, and, and that sort of landlord. A lot of times, people inherit a house, grandma died, and they rent it out. They don't necessarily have all of the resources to bring that, that, that house up to housing quality standards or to code to make it look better. They just don't. I mean, they're renting it, and they're getting the rent, and over time, the house is just deteriorating, and that happens to a lot of people. So what the thought was here was rental rehabilitation loans, they're one percent interest loans to landlords. And if you look at the cost of that, it's a heck of a lot better than a equity line that you can get, and it's, it's affordable. So it might convince a few people to actually fix code violations before we get to the point where minimum housing code or whatever gets, or your code enforcement or your inspections has to go spend hours upon hours upon hours of inspections and reports to try to get that fixed. You can maybe get some of those fixed through this process without going, you know, nuclear when something has really fallen to disrepair. So, life alone would be ten years. The landlords have to charge no more than the fair market rate during the affordability period for that ten years. Any code violations that arise during that ten years is their responsibility. They're the landlord. And they have to maintain. That would be part of a note and deed that would be filed on the house. And then landlords have to, would, would have to use contractors from the approved contractors list. You know, cost estimates have to be done, work write-ups have to be done. Contractors will be paid directly by the city after the work has been done and certified by the city. We have, yeah, the, the city has its own inspector, who I've actually known for quite some time. But if the volume's there, if the workload's there, we have inspectors that can do that work, too, that do it all around our region. And we also have contractors that are certified to do this work that we can use as a pool for these houses, if that's the kind of program that you'd want to do. And then again, you have a cap of twenty dollars, or twenty dollars. That's not going to get a lot done. Twenty thousand dollars to bring something basically up to code with thirty thousand dollars if it has lead-based paint that's found by a test. So, you know, I, you, basically, you have a little more flexibility with the homeowner occupied houses, which is generally the priority of most cities when they're doing this. But if somebody that has a rental house that really would like to have that assistance to bring that house up to, to a decent standard for the people that they have living there and are renting to, then I think this would be a good program. And basically, it's for single-family and duplexes. And, and the reason, there's a reason for that, and we can get into that in a minute, but a lot of times in the Section Eight program, for instance, the Housing Voucher Program, you have people living in single-family homes. I don't know how many vouchers there are setting inside the city of Burlington, but it's got to be at least two or three hundred or so, would be my guess. And if we got with their, that program or with small landlords, this could be a program that could actually fix up some of those, those Section Eight houses, which have to meet housing quality standards to have a voucher. Does not mean it has to meet code. Housing quality standards or habitability standard, they're not a code or a building standard. So this might be something that could work with other programs that would help improve the housing quality in neighborhoods that have a concentration of the, that type of services or that type of program. Does anybody have any questions about this, this big concept? It's not that big. It's actually a small one. Where, single-family homes or duplexes? Mike, I did have a question. So, as far as the, the types of landlords that could apply, like if we have landlords who are kind of chronic offenders for code violations or quality, is there a standard that those landlords could be held to that, where they might no longer be able to access this? You know, I'll be, I'll be frank, it, it, problem landlords can, or landlords they have issues with, get there from all sorts of different reasons. You know, we don't know what, I might know specific ones in your city, but I don't know what those reasons are. If they agree to the, to the security put on it, if they agree to the income, and they agree to us doing the work, then I don't see any problem with that. I think it could actually help some people that may not have the resources to, to fix the problem immediately. They think I can do it over five years, but you don't have that. You don't, five years doesn't work for the city, or ten years doesn't work for the city. On my house, it does on the interior, because we pay for everything cash. But, you know, it's, it's, if you have a house that's become a problem, if they're willing to do this, I think it would be a benefit for both the people living there as well as the city. Okay. I had another question about that, kind of how the contractors lists get structured with a mindset of equity, making sure that you have a good pool of contractors. It's supposed to be a local quality and equitable manager, specifically supporting minority contractors. Have you seen cities kind of engage with that mindset? I think Winston-Salem's always done a real good job of that. I think that Greensboro's tried over the years. We, because we have such a big geography that we're working in, actually have three certified MWBE contractors. And I'm separating, actually, MBE contractors, and there's several WBE contractors, and we have two that have been certified as Section Three employers by the city of Winston-Salem at one point. So we, we've tried, and, and we have to do this for the Housing Finance Agency. I mean, they encourage us to do that. So we do have a pretty diverse, both in the ownership and the general contractors. They're not all me, for instance, which is good. For one, I, I can't be a general contractor, but what I meant was I was a fifty-two-year-old white male. They're not all me. And then if you have contractors that are interested in working there in Alamance County in Burlington, then they have, you know, we're always taking applications for contractors. We don't have enough. With all the counties and jobs that we're doing, we always need more contractors, and we're willing to train them, we're willing to. When they bid on a house, a new contractor, they're always going to do something wrong, because they've never done it to our standard. We walk them through that. We tell them how to put that ramp in correctly. We tell them how to put those rails into where we can accept them. We tell them how the insulation is done correctly. Then after that, most of them are like, oh, okay, I see that this works, and then they become a part of our, our pool. Okay, so it is a two-way process, and not, I wanted to make sure it wasn't some level of regulatory capture. So. Oh, well, no, we don't have what you might say in terms of a city's a percentage of contracts go-to rule. We do not have that. This has to be competitively bid, because it's the Home Program, and the federal rules require us to competitively bid those. But like I said, we, I, I'll send to Mike our list, and you can actually, actually, I think I sent it to your economic development team that shows all of our different contractors and their certifications for WBE or MBE or Section Three. Okay, very good. Any other council members have questions on this section? All right, Michael, I think we can move on. All right, thank you. Next slide, affordable housing development. One of the biggest things you can do with the Home Program is help build affordable housing or rehab affordable housing. You know, the goal of that is to put more affordable housing into the market, but it's also to, to improve existing affordable housing. It's to put in different types of housing. If you're missing certain types of housing, it's, it's basically, it can be as creative or non-creative as you want to be when it comes to choosing the projects that, that gets submitted during an RFP, which we probably need to do over the next month or so. And I think Mike or, again, Mike or Nolan could probably talk to that better than I could in the process, but I think we have the funding to be able to do at least one or two projects that would actually help bring in some decent affordable housing for different groups that may need it inside the city of Burlington, but also possibly in Alamance County. I know of a couple of projects that might even apply. So, it, you know, everything that we're doing, I think sometimes it's easy to forget when you start talking about the grants and the funding, that we're doing this to help people that need help. And the whole purpose of the program is to help people that are income-qualified, for whatever reason, to live in better housing and, and have better access to decent housing for them, for their children, for whomever is in their household. So, you know, I think ultimately, we could probably have some really neat projects. I, there's a lot of developers that we work with, because we're in a twelve-county area that we could bring to play inside Burlington and Alamance County that may not have come here otherwise. Some do, though. I mean, Burlington is a, a goal for a lot of developers with tax credit projects. I know of one that's been approved. But, you know, there, we have other developers that are interested in more kind of, I'd say, niche housing, meaning, you know, specific people that have come out of either incarceration situation or domestic violence or homelessness, to try to provide stabilized housing for them. So there'll be, if we are able to do a request for proposals for this program, we, I do think, will have some interesting applications. And then, of course, as you have to remember, and that's the final line, is final proposals to be brought to council for consideration. You are the governing body of what gets approved by this program for large developments. So that, you know, that, while you get recommendations, you'll have something to look at and understand why those recommendations. So that, you know, that, while you get recommendations, you'll have something to look at and understand why those recommendations are being made.
So, I have questions about that. So what, what are the numbers that you're talking about? What, what can you apply for in that kind of funding? Or financing?
Okay, well, well, actually, in terms of the financing, they're always going to be, nonprofits you could approve to have grants for this if you want. And that's fine. For, for profits, there's a lot of for profits that are involved in affordable housing. These are going to be loans. I generally recommend and what we do in Surrey County is 2% loans and 2% loans they will take. They're 20-year because it's new construction and that creates a good amount of program income when you get those types of projects. And when I say program income. That's so you can go out and do more projects and help more people. So you want to generate program income. In rehab, it's kind of hard because you're placing that program income generation on low-income homeowners. And it just, it, it's, it's hard to sell, but for developers, it's not nearly as difficult to, to find developers that will take advantage of this type of gap financing, provide affordable housing and also pay back on those loans.
Kathy, when we, we had the opportunity to go down to Salisbury and work with Mayor Alexander down there, we're talking about broadband, but she showed us Brenner Crossing. Down there, which I think is an example of a development that I think Kathy and I both would like to learn more about how we can, we get and get in our community. And they're, they're affordable and mixed income developments that look very much like a market development. And that's something where we, we've talked for many years about, we look at our BHA properties in the city and they look like a housing authority property. Versus you're looking at what communities are doing around the country and a lot of the, the new developments look like a market property. And they respect that individuals kind of rights as a resident. And they fit the community better. And so I'm really curious if you can bring back some, some more information at a future meeting about what cities are doing and what things we can apply here in Burlington to get affordable and mixed income properties that look like market and like market properties and have that quality of living.
Absolutely. What was the name of that project in Salisbury?
Brenner, B-E-B-R-E-N-N-E-R Crossing.
Okay. Say, if you guys look up online, look up Willow Pond in Moxville or look up Whistler's Whistler's Cove in Mount Airy. Those are new tax credit projects built since like 2016. Those projects, those, those apartments look market rate. They just do. They've changed over the last 20 years. The, the, the game has, has gotten a lot higher bar and standard over the last few years. And there are some that are really pretty spectacular. And, you know, I think we would hope that we could, we could encourage that. I think it'd benefit your, you know, benefit the city and the people who live there.
Agreed. Yeah, yeah. So I'd be very interested in seeing, based on this slide, what we can put together.
Okay. And actually, the council, the council again has, you know, that approval process. So if you've got three projects that have been proposed and you see one that really just goes, you know, has that wow factor that you're really looking for, A, it's going to be serving the people that are eligible, but B, it's really gonna, it's, it's gonna be kind of a gem in, in any area that's built. So, you know, that would be your prerogative.
Yeah, especially had that infill development conversation. I think that fits nicely into it. So.
Yeah.
I just pulled up Willow Pond. That's, that's, that's pretty impressive.
It's gorgeous, isn't it?
In Moxville.
Yeah, it, it's got an elevator. We got people, we got developer, it's a nonprofit developer, Wesley CDC that's out of out of, not Davidson, Huntersville. And they actually didn't elevate, that's an elevator unit. Hardly any tax credit projects built in the last 10 years have an elevator in them because that adds a hundred thousand dollars to it. But, and there are tight budgets, but um, it's, they had like 300 people signed up for that before it was even finished. And so it's, that's mostly elderly and disabled. That's only elderly and disabled.
Yes, it's 55 and over, yeah.
Yeah. And I don't like it when I say elderly and disabled and I'm 52 and I'm like, so about three years I can live there? No, no, I, I wish I could. But it is beautiful. And actually, if anybody would ever like to go out on a tour on something closer, I'd be happy to arrange that. There are some projects there in Guilford County that are in. There are some here in Alamance that have been done over the last few years. If you want to take a look at something, I'd be happy to arrange that.
I think that'd be helpful, even if it, even if we do a virtual tour in this day and age with just some photos and kind of a walkthrough of some of the the mechanics of how the structure, kind of what council put together generated type of a development.
And I for a second forgot about COVID. Wow, thank you. I forgot about it for a second. That's great. All right. So if we don't have, I mean, are there any other questions?
Questions from council? All right. Got anything else for us, Michael?
Yes, I do. Down payment assistance. So those people that, that meet, again, income qualifications and a lot of, there, you have some nonprofits in this community that are really trying to build some decent single-family homes. That might, you know, help first-time home buyers with down payment assistance up to $15,000. And it has to be, there has to be underwriting. Not everyone gets $15,000. It's, it's, it's up to $15,000. And if that doesn't work, if you guys need to raise it for whatever reason, because of the cost of housing in Burlington. It's not the same everywhere, but it is high everywhere, even places that seem lower, it's still high. But they have to undergo housing counseling prior to the, the purchase essentially by a certified HUD counselor. You have one in Burlington. It's a forgivable, no-interest loan with a 10-year affordability period. So they have to stay in the home for 10 years or they owe some money back. Recapture provisions are basically what that means. It's not resale. They don't have to sell it to another income-qualified person. That's really hard to administer. But if they sell it and they owe some money left, they pay that back to the program. So, you know, I, I think that most cities, most entitlement cities like, like Burlington generally have a program like this. And it, it's, it'll be interesting to see what the demand is. I, I don't, I, I can't really say. Maybe some of you would have some opinions about that in terms of what the demand would be for people that are, you know, generally making a a household of two people under approximately $32,000 that has good credit and wants to buy a house. How many people are there, you know? And that's part of a market survey essentially, but I think it's, it's a good program. And most places that have it do find a way to help people become homeowners through this type of program. So. Any questions about that?
Are you saying that this is something we have not been doing?
Direct like this, I, I don't think so. Does Mike or Nolan want to comment?
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't been doing it on an individual basis. We have done it with our, with Habitat for Humanity on a limited basis. Developers, yes. We have not been doing it on an individual basis, but we can't, this is, this would be a way to do that.
Yeah.
I think based on some of the other programs that have deployed like the HOPE program, which I think is now through First Horizon Bank and some other and activities, this is definitely something needed. Especially when you look at our median incomes.
Michael, in the past, we had discussed IDAs. Do you want to touch base on that just a little bit?
Absolutely. They can be a nightmare to manage. Really, you, it, it's almost a bank issue for an IDA. Forsyth County is probably the only area, the only larger entity in this region that has done one. But what they did is they got private banks and whatnot to fund an IDA.
Can you go step back and IDA?
Oh, individual development account. I'm sorry. Individual development accountant, Huddlinggo is basically a person that enters a program like this, takes some of their funding and it's matched by a program. And over time, they have more money to either put it towards an education, to buy a car, to start a business, to buy a house, whatever. It, it's a very, it, it's, takes a lot of attention. But like I said, Forsyth County actually did it with using not federal funds, which makes it complicated. If that doesn't work, if somebody gets not, gets an individual development account and they don't go forward and get that degree or they do not buy that house, you owe that money back. So it, it's, it's got a lot of, of, of strings attached to it. It's very administratively heavy. However, Forsyth, by getting some banks and some local entities to, to, you know, pledge some money towards it. I think, and I can contact them if you want and see how that's been going. But that, that's about the only one I know of. Greensboro doesn't do it. Some nonprofits use private donations to do them. And it's just a little easier, I think, from that standpoint. The city doing it would be, be acting like a bank. And it, it, again, you'd be monitoring people's progress and their goals. You'd be taking their, their payments to put into an account and matching that with your other funding. It, it's just not. You can serve a lot more people with a, with a big development, honestly. You can do more when you rehab somebody's house or help them buy a house directly. And that's just an opinion.
That makes sense from a community good kind of standpoint.
Okay, but, but also I, I would just want to add, it is administratively heavy. And we probably, we'd have to, there'd have to be some real thought put into how something like that would actually run with federal funds.
Any other questions on down payment assistance? All right.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't think fast enough. I hear you say that the upper limit of a qualified family would be fifty, $32,000, that would be there.
Approximately. I don't have that in front of me. Yes, a family of two generally for the 80% of adjusted median family income in all of our 12 counties is generally around $32,000, give or take a thousand dollars. I can send that to you directly. I just don't have that in front of me right now.
That's fine.
Kind of a general rule of thumb.
All right.
Okay, last slide. Discussion Direction Guidance. In bigger font.
I think we've been doing that as we roll, any?
As we rolled, exactly. Thank you.
Further discussion Direction Guidance.
Exactly.
Michael, one of the challenges we've talked about previously is in administering some of these or even development is CHODOs in our community.
Yeah.
Can you talk a little about some of the work you've done around that or your knowledge of kind of? We, we've found that we don't have CHODOs in the community or those who meet the standards. Yeah.
Quick overview of that. It's a community development housing organization. It's part of the home program only. They basically have to have bylaws that meet certain restrictions on their board membership. They have to have experience in affordable housing development. There's a checklist that HUD created for CHODO approval and they have to be approved for every new project. I'll be frank, in Surrey County where we've had that home program for a long time, we've had some very successful CHODOs and we've had some that just can't produce. And it, it just depends on the market and it depends on their volunteer base. It depends on so many factors. But they, you have a lot of, you also have in the community development world called a CBDO, which is a community-based development organization, which doesn't have quite the same restrictions on its setup. Which can be used for different uses with the Community Development Block Grant Fund. So there are ways to approach this that help those that can become a CHODO, become a CHODO. And those that may not be in a good position to do that, to maybe take a different path. But generally in the home program, 15% of all projects have to go to CHODOs. That has been waived for the 19 and 20 money because of COVID.
Yeah, I'd be curious to kind of see more strategies around that in development or if we need to bring, try to see if we can recruit CHODOs from nearby counties. So having your expertise in kind of the region is helpful in that, that respect. Or, but ideally developing from within. Or even seeing if there are CHODOs who have not been able to produce, can we work with them? Is there a way to, to get them up to standards?
There, there are different methods for doing that, yes. There are.
Cause yeah, we'd love to see that. It's been a wishlist item of how can we activate that piece of this, this large equation?
Okay, that'll, that'll definitely be something I can get back to Mike and Nolan about pretty quickly here.
There's a, a group that, that has been meeting to look at the idea of community land trusts in, in all over Burlington and Alamance County. And I don't know where that's going to go. They're doing some kind of needs assessment at this time. But I would imagine they would appreciate your input into what it is they're trying to accomplish.
I'd be happy to. You can put them in contact with me. I'm very familiar with community land trusts.
I'll make sure that they do.
Please. Thank you.
And I would also be interested in the, in a virtual tour of especially that Salisbury one and the one in Moxville, if that's something we could put together.
Also, I'll see what I could do. I mean, we have inspections that happen in that, that, for section eight vouchers in Willow Pond on a pretty regular basis still. So we might be able to get some good photos or some video that way for that project.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussion? All right. Michael, any other questions for council?
I don't have any questions for council. I just, I'm very happy to be here and I thank everybody for, you know, especially Mike and Nolan and Harden that. You know, it's, it's, it's kind of a weird situation coming in like this, but I think it's been going very smoothly and we're trying to figure out exactly how this is all going to work. And I think it's been a good, it's been a good idea and a good experience so far. Thank you.
Very good. Well, we appreciate PTRC for all they do and the partnerships that we've had for quite a while. So glad to have your support now in, in housing.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Contact information for Michael from somebody at some point.
Yeah, I can send it to you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other things on item A of our agenda?
For, for staff's takeaway on these four different concepts for, you know, using the usage of the home funds or is council good with us moving forward to develop those further? Just trying to get some direction on that.
That's from council?
Say that again, Nolan. What are you, what are you asking?
Well, you know, we talked about the homeowner rehab doing it through forgivable loans. We talked about the low-interest loan for rental rehabs. We talked about affordable housing development and down payment assistance. Those four things that we're, we're bringing to council, really to try to utilize the funds that we have available, continuing along the same path of interest loans that we've been doing is, you know, we're not, I think we've got some capacity to move some of these funds and, and improve things in our community by, by using these concepts we're throwing out here to council tonight. So I guess we're just looking for some direction. You know, do we, are you, is council good if we move forward with the, you know, furthering these concepts so that we can begin to use those as, as tools for home funds?
Were there any items that jumped out that folks think we should pump the brakes on?
Well, the, the reality of it is the, the loans that we're putting out now are in essence becoming grants anyway. We're, we're, we're writing, writing those off. So if you really look and we took the tour and, and rode around, I, I think we've got some significant issues with, with rental properties. So the, the rental rehab piece I think would, would resonate and certainly would resonate with those landlords, those investors that would like to do better, but maybe don't have the financial means or, or need a little help or a little jumpstart. And then the affordable housing piece, you know, there's a couple of, of, of nonprofits that are actually working on that now. If we could assist those, I would agree. I mean, of the four, those two things, the rental rehab and, 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 and those that are, that are trying to go down the nonprofit path to, to build affordable housing, I think may, make most sense. The, the other thing is when it gets to the individuals, it gets complicated. And sometimes it's the jumping the hurdles, jumping through the hoops to, to get all these things done. Kind of can overwhelm somebody. You know, I, I would think that the down payment assistance would sort of be third on the list, but that, that's just my two cents worth on it. But those other two items, I think would be a wonderful repurposing of what we're doing now.
Other council thoughts?
Nolan, what kind of money are we talking about that's in play here presently?
Well, I think we probably need to do a little bit more analysis with, you know, shifting from one fiscal year to the next. But in terms of home funds, I mean, the I think the takeaway is there there's enough home funds here if you wanted to do affordable housing development, rental rental rehab, even the forgivable loans for the homeowner rehab. I mean, there there's funds here to work with. I I would say Mike probably have a closer number. It's the home funds, if you look at even, you know, the program income and the funds over the fiscal years that that's available. I mean, it's easily over a million dollars. So you certainly could tackle some projects here. And at some point, you need to, we need to act, you know, we need to utilize these funds because you don't want to lose, you know, future additional funding because you haven't used what what you've been provided. So.
Yeah, we we have funds back to two thousand sixteen that we need to we need to move along, push forward. And it's 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 a little bit over a million dollars from sixteen to twenty. So this is another reason we bought these strategies too. These would make a big impact if we can get get organized and and move forward.
That's significant. And there's enough. There are enough people out there now that are working on this. If we could support their efforts with 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 that money, I mean, I think that just, that could really jumpstart a lot of things.
Yeah, I think the RFP process, you know, you you could end up with a number of potential proposals that that may vary, you know, depending on the specific projects. But, you know, we may have something that's nonprofit or we may have something that is for profit, but maybe that's structures alone versus a grant. So really, you know, I think if we did the RFP and, you know, Michael Blair and his folks, they do this. And so, you know, we would be utilizing a very similar format to what they would do. But that that would kind of let us see what we would have. And then we would bring those back to council to go, you know, what what do you think of these proposals? Which ones do you like? How would you like to move forward? Mike, is that a good way to describe generally how that would work?
Yes, yeah, we would. We would use their 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 format and and process because it it's working in our twelve county region. So that request for proposals would be, you know, that would give everybody a chance to look and submit. And then you evaluate those that are interested and have the ability to do it. That's a key point. Michael brought that up as well. You know, not to to point it out, but I'll point out, these are federal funds and you know, there's several things that nonprofits have to align themselves well with and and report to. So but we can, we have some that are working towards that. So be a good time to put that RFP out and see what we get.
And and not, I don't want to complicate this at all, but I do, you may recall when we did our annual action plan, we also allocated infrastructure money into CDBG annual budget. And so that could come into play with the proposals as well, because as Michael has shared with us, those proposals, home funds are limited to that development. But if you need to make us make a street connection from that development to a primary road, maybe some of those infrastructure funds for CDBG kicks in and is utilized for that element. But all that is what's happening. You know, work through the proposals and try to help put together something that makes sense.
Well, I I like to to thank to thank the staff, you two guys, especially here to in reference to leading the city that if we can to continue to work with the cog on this. Because that question, they got expertise that individual staff members can't can't bring to the table overnight. And I think I was pretty impressed with this gentleman we just had online there. If there could be some conversations in reference to just what, you know, how we could best look at investing our money for the highest return. I know there's multiple needs. But, you know, it would, I'd like to see if we could put together some kind of a concept that would again, look at attempting to 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 make the very best of our investment. And certainly I believe that this particular group with the experience they've got would be a would be an interesting partner to work with.
Building on that point, Harold, Michael touched early on on the transformative or kind of the impact of doing a couple of these implementations in one neighborhood and how that can start to shift the balance or the momentum in a neighborhood. So I'd be interested future discussions on kind of are there ways we can tie these together to target one area at a time to have a larger impact? Because what we've seen over the history of this these funds is we've we've been using them kind of scattershot all over the place.
Right, right.
You never transform a street. You never get the the organic economy of a neighborhood restarted. It all just kind of sputters along. So any any points that, Michael, you can bring back on that would be helpful. And the other piece, the one I just remembered was, we've had talks about just Burlington Housing Authority. And so any advice you have on kind of, should we loop them in in this discussion? Kind of where, I know they're engaged in the RAD program. How can we align those objectives for the betterment of the community?
That, to that point, I've been meeting with some of those folks and they're very interested in anything that we want to help with, obviously. It's all about the money. But I think it would be important, Jim mentioned some folks that he's talking to and staff are saying there are people that they're talking to and I'm talking to people and I'm thinking maybe we should do kind of a brain dump on that at some point to see who the stakeholders are and and whether or not we can come together with all of those folks.
Michael, this is Peter. I'm I'm more familiar with capacity building dollars as it relates to micro enterprise and CDBG. I know we're focused on housing. Are there capacity building dollars available that can help coach up some of these CHODOs and CBDOs to be better partners that can be a part of our program going forward?
Yeah, in in the home program, again, this is Greensboro is the lead entity and the primary user of the HUD system for this program. But there is CHODO operating assistance that we can occasionally give to a CHODO to help them build capacity directly for housing development. That is a a did it in Greensboro a few years ago with what's called now Housing Solutions, which does, you know, minor repairs on houses throughout Gulf County. That's the only one I really recall doing that with. But that was very successful. I mean, sometimes it really does work. It just depends on the the organization that you're working with.
Nolan, Mike, is that more helpful? Are there still some gaps that we haven't addressed?
Well, just, I'm sorry for belaboring this, the homeowner forgivable loans, is is this something that council is comfortable with? I'll just take them kind of one at a time. I mean, are we are we to move forward with that or?
I don't have an objection to that. Like, as previously.
I don't, I'm not trying to rush, counsel. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, do we come back with more information or?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it either. I mean, in essence, that's what they are anyway.
That's a good point.
Yeah, as we talked about, kind of who can bear the interest and it's it's not the low income homeowner necessarily.
Correct. It it really is sort of backwards the way it's constructed. But we, you know, we don't pursue those generally and there's a lot of write offs regarding that particular fund. Each year, there was a huge write off this past fiscal year. So that's what they are initially or basically anyway. So we may as well go ahead and structure it as such. And that way, I think we know what it is.
Other items, Nolan?
Well, they're like for the rental rehab, those are the would be low interest loans. Obviously, you're getting your program in, but you can come back on those with a very small amount of interest. But is is that something that sounds good to council to move for? I think that's where a lot of our issues we see in affordable housing are.
Yeah, I'd be very interested in that. And to Michael Blair's point, you're you're building your fund with that program. So if you can get enough people involved and you're you're sort of growing that fund and it could kind of be perpetually, it gets bigger and bigger, assuming that, you know, that it's managed properly. And I I just think that that's the most emerging need from the ride around that we saw that that could go a long ways to blighted areas. And with the right developer, with the right landlord, I think that would be our best bang for the buck.
Yeah, and from talk, walking neighborhoods and talking to to neighbors, there's so many that can point to a rental house on a street that is and so to have a tool in the toolbox to be able to help turn those around for for the sake of of the neighbors and the whole, a whole street, I think, is absolutely critical. It's just making sure we get all the details of managing it.
Got it. And then.
And unfortunately, that might become even more prevalent with the, this hopes not, but with the economic impact of this of where we are now over the next couple of years, that 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 situation may become more prevalent in 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 more, in a variety of communities that people are going to face some challenges.
Yep.
And I guess finally, on the affordable housing development, two things to keep in in mind here is we do have I'd say maybe a couple that that we're communicating with that this would be something they'd definitely be interested in. The timing is important. Michael Blair had shared with us, you know, when folks are applying for their low income tax credits, it's good to have this process precede that. So you're looking at trying to get this process. If we're going to do RFPs for affordable housing development, probably try to get that done early twenty one. So that those folks will know that they have that and that helps their performer when they're trying to get tax credit. So those, I'm just trying to share some of those thoughts too. And we certainly can bring whatever information back council wants on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Say yes to that going forward.
Bob, any objections from you? Or does that all sound good?
No, no.
So it sounds like utilizing the PTRC model for the Affordable Housing Development RFP process, we would move forward with that and and see see what we get and bring something back to council for consideration.
I have one, one quick question before we leave the topic. Mike Nun, you said we had roughly a million dollars. I mean, is this something that's available now, the whole million?
Yes, sir. It goes back, yeah, it 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 continues forward until you spend it. You will lose it as we talked about two six, two thousand sixteen is when we go back to our, what we were our oldest money, oldest funds. And I I looked today, it's probably a little bit more, but it's one point two million roughly.
Okay, so that that amount is available was, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, anything else?
Thank you. Really appreciate the feedback.
I appreciate it. All right. Thank you again, everyone. Michael, thank you for joining us. We'll look for different discussions.
Bye bye.
Take care. All right. Next on our agenda, item B, Unified Development Ordinance Amendments. This time, I'd like to recognize Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're going to talk about UDO amendments. We continue to monitor development proposals and feedback from the development community. As you know, this was adopted November first of two thousand nineteen. As with the past amendments, staff has prepared additional information for consideration. We continue to work with Chad Meadows, which is here with us again tonight of Code Bright Planners. You were provided a hard copy version, which is very large. As you can see, the document is six to seven hundred pages. Also, a digital copy. You did receive a PowerPoint presentation, which was very detailed, was also color coded. And still a little bit of Chad's thunder tonight. He has gone back and summarized that presentation. And we'll just be pointing out the key, the key information from from the color coded document. So I'll let him reference back to that. But a big part of this is the one sixty D state state requirements. That was state legislation that that changed the planning regulations and that's a major part of these updates that are required by state statute and must be included. There's also a a good portion of these that are staff recommendations and Chad's going to go over those as well. P and Z reviewed and unanimously approved these changes at the September thirtieth meeting. And a public he hearing will be set for October twentieth for city council to consider these changes at your October twentieth meeting. So I'll turn this over to Chad Meadows and he can proceed with the presentation.
Welcome back, Chad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. How's everybody doing?
Great.
Wonderful. Hanging in there.
It's good to see you guys. I I really appreciate the chance to be with you tonight. I know everybody's been on the edge of their seat, excited about talking about the UDO. So let's get underway. Can everybody see my screen? There should be a PowerPoint slide that's inside of PDF.
You got that up, Chuck.
Is that visible? Great, great, very good. So I am not going to take a great deal of your time tonight. I'll just start by saying that the staff has put in a tremendous amount of effort into what's before you tonight. We've been working on this for several months. As Mike mentioned, the the PowerPoint that I'm going to go through tonight is just a little bit different than the color coded one that was sent initially. The first round at this had about a hundred and thirty two items. We all decided that was a little bit too long. So tonight, I'm going to focus solely on the substantive changes that staff is suggesting. There's about thirty one of them or so. Mike also mentioned one sixty D, the the rewriting of the planning enabling statute. Every local government in the state is now undergoing changes to their development regulations. We had about forty five sort of key change areas to deal with in the UDO. We were actually in very good stead, given the work that was put into the UDO over the last year. So forty five changes is actually a relatively small number when compared to communities of your size who haven't updated their regulations recently. Time permitting, I will cover what I think are the top five one sixty D changes. Certainly, if anyone has any questions or anything, I'll more than happy to try to answer those questions. What I'm going to do is move quickly through the slides. I'll discuss one or two of the of the most important changes on the slide and then I'll stop and see if there's any questions. And we will hopefully move through these substantive, these thirty one substantive changes from staff. I am not anticipating talking about the water related changes. Numerous folks from engineering spent time making sure that our water supply, watershed, stormwater and riparian buffer provisions were consistent with state model ordinances. Like one sixty D, those water related changes were things that needed to be made. And then finally, the editorial changes, that's what gave rise to the 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 great breadth of of pages in your document that have changes. Typos, acronyms, cross references, word smithing, et cetera. Also not going to cover that tonight. We're going to focus on substantive changes. So let's jump in. What I've done, numbered these, we start in chapter two and make our way sequentially through the document. I've listed the page numbers of the changes. And I will just focus on on the the couple that are most important from the slide. I think first and foremost, you you are familiar with the administrative adjustment process. That's the safety net procedure that allows minor de minimis adjustments to numeric standards. After working with this for a year, staff has has noticed that we needed to limit the the ability of administrative adjustments on transportation impact analysis and flood related requirements like base flood elevation, et cetera. So that was a change that was made. We have put in some additional clarifications about conditional rezonings. Burlington is extremely adept at the conditional zoning process and the the procedure for rezonings is very robust. You may recall, we allow people to file a site plan or a concept plan with their conditional zoning application. And we made some adjustments to clarify that in cases when an applicant chooses to simply file a concept plan, they will need to come back through the site plan review process. Made some changes clarifying that conditional zoning applications can be adjusted during the review, even the the hearing for consideration. And then finally, we expanded the expiration revision, reversion provision. Best practice tells us conditional rezoning for speculative purposes is is not a good way to to plan your community. And so what we are Um, and so what we are suggesting be done is that we just added a provision that it that clarifies for the applicant that in the instance three years passes from the date of the conditional zoning approval and no progress is made on any of the development contemplated in the conditional zoning, the city may, uh city council might exercise its right um to initiate a zoning to revert that land back to its prior zoning designation or some other appropriate zoning designation. So um, that is uh, that's just a clarification that we wanted to include.
Chad, is 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 three years a uh, is is that? Is that a reasonable amount of time? I mean, it still seems too long to me.
It's funny that you ask that question. Um, we originally set it at two years. However, we are using the three year period for some of the other procedures and we we thought about it a lot, given COVID, given where we are with things these days, uh we felt like um a more optimistic, a less conservative approach was warranted at this time.
Chad, on that same kind of point, is the actions that consider progress set in some way? You can't just move a pile of dirt arbitrarily and call it progress?
Correct.
Right, right. So you would need to pull permits and then you would need to show uh good uh progress on those permits as we uh discuss in the definitions and in the other permit processes themselves.
Something that tangibly have to be done.
Yes.
Under, okay, good. Other kinds of questions?
I like two years, but I I'm okay with it.
I would say let's try it, and if if it becomes a problem, then we could go back to two years, but for the sake of conditions right now and what we're anticipating in the coming couple of years, it might be wise at this point. Okay, um, I'm going to talk a little bit about the zoning district provisions. Uh, we made a handful of changes um to several of the residential districts. Essentially, what was done um for the sake of easing administration, um we adjusted how we were handling duplex, triplex and quadruplex units and have shifted them around in terms of the types of dimensional requirements that they will be subject to. And the result of that um are a series of changes to those summary district tables for the high density residential, the medium density residential, the mixed use district tables. And so what we've done is added lot area and width requirements for duplexes. Um, we're recognizing in the HDR district um the the ability to use an average uh street setback for vacant lots of record um that were plotted perhaps before these setbacks were established. And then finally, some very modest increases in height amounts uh in the HDR uh from forty eight feet to fifty feet for multifamily, mixed use and non-residential. Mostly to be consistent with what was in the prior ordinance. So no great shakes here, just a little bit of adjustment to how we handle the moderate level density housing and recognizing that we needed more dimensional standard clarity to accommodate those things. So that was, yes.
Question on that. Um, so on the triplex, quadplex.
Hmm.
Um, it seems like a substantial jump because of the the maximum or minimum lot area requirements.
Right.
Interpretation effectively what those previously allowed was for a triplex, quadplex to blend rather seamlessly into the density of the residential community. But now by almost quadrupling the amount of space that needs to take up, you now have a large lot that has to house those, which makes it kind of non-conforming. You know, have single family and then this big thing.
Right.
Versus, my hope had been that we were going to be able to blend density in an affordable manner that wouldn't disrupt the community setting.
Uh, it it's it's a fair criticism, and um if that's something that the council um has has concern about, it's very easy for us to go in and make further adjustments to the table to recognize that triplex and quadruplex units um can have lot areas that are are more in line with what they were before these suggested changes. That's not necessarily a problem here. What was driving this was ease of administration and clarity in the table. And I I personally don't have any concern with your suggestion that we um bring those minimum lot areas for triplex, quadruplex back down to what they were uh when we were handling those as a single family attached residential.
That that would be my preference because I mean, the way it's written in this revision basically assumes they're all single level, uh ignoring somewhat that you can just go to the second level. And again, it's conforming, doesn't stand out in any way.
Right.
So if if council's amendment, I would really like to see that reconsidered. And that affects um your high density, your medium density, and I believe your mixed.
Correct.
Effect on the mixed use too.
That you are absolutely correct, sir.
Any council? Not.
Okay.
Okay.
So would would council like to see that as part of what comes before council October twentieth at the public hearing?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to maybe get a better understanding of why we wanted to move in this direction. I mean, I I understand Chad says it's for ease of for staff purposes, but I mean, is it does it just make it easier to interpret? What was the intent from staff here, Nolan?
Mike, do you want to, you want to tackle that one?
That it was more, the reason it started was more of a definition of from a zoning interpretation. Um, and it went, and it went further from there. That's why we actually removed triplex and and quadruplex. I think the application of it, I mean, would be the details we could, we could, we could look at, but it's I don't think there was a specific development issue or proposal. It was just the way the dup- the triplex and quadruplex um were in the single family detached standards.
Uh, I would say in my reading of it, it is hard to kind of understand what what that means in single family and single family attached versus multi, because it's multi-family, but you're talking about many different possible forms in that.
And that was.
It does get confusing.
That was the basis.
The way that you've seen that that could, is there another column that's needed there between single family attached and multi-family that encompasses the triplex, quadplex? Or?
You're, we're going back. This is um what staff wrestled with uh probably a year and a half ago. We we were having these discussions and then we were like, oh, we had the same comments. Why don't we just add some columns? And we have, and it was like, wow, we're we're really getting a lot of columns in here, and Chad, you can chime in here on this, but I think uh we went one direction. Upon further reflection, i- it felt like we really needed to move the direction where the the multi-family included the triplex and quadruplex, but um anyway, and Conrad's has, you know, discussion with with Joey and staff on that. He may have something to add. I'm not sure, but.
Yeah, because I mean, that some of the other factors don't change significantly when you look at like the minimum rear setbacks or anything like that. But again, that lot, minimum lot area size changes very significantly between, and I can understand why it's in the multi-family. Um, but again, taking something that's only a a tiny increment more dense than single family or duplex.
Yeah, and I think, I think, and you know, Mike, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe in the uh the prior zoning code, the triplex and quadruplex was part of multi-family.
It was.
It was.
Yes, that, and that's been the, that's been the rub or the pool, if you will, with this is single family or multi-family.
And I think also just coming off of our last discussion with PTRC um and kind of affordable units. How do we enable, I mean, land cost is a huge part in the affordability of a unit. And so if we're mandating four times the amount of land um to be able to put a fourplex versus a duplex, then we're mandating that units become more expensive. So let's not make our own job harder.
Well, no, I agree with that in concept, but the reality of it is we've got to please both sides of the fence a little bit. Um, so I I I understand the complexity of what we're talking about, and certainly it could possibly potentially provide a pinch to affordable housing initiatives in a particular area, but there's, there's other, there's other initiatives that we just, we need to be as as aware of as well. And and I think to staff's point, I I get where they're coming from with this. Um, I I just wondering if there's a another way to skin this cat.
We can take, we can look at that, Chad. We've had a lot of discussions. We can look at our notes and see if there's any other suggestions that we have.
I I I truly believe that these, that the the impetus for these changes was one of ease of administration interpretation. I do not think there was ever serious consideration about consciously moving in a direction to make it more difficult or more complicated or more expensive to accommodate a triplex or a quadruplex. Simply put, your prior regulations treated it as multi-family. It was very confusing for staff and members of the development community to understand that this was a different kind of use type. We had some fairly clear guidance from the comprehensive plan that we wanted to accommodate this kind of development and made some accommodations for it. We simply need to go back and reinsert those accommodations while at the same time crafting the standard so that staff understands it, and 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 we can certainly do that.
And if for some reason that crafting process pushes that item beyond the October twentieth um hearing, is that something council be amenable with just hearing at a later date?
I I would, yes. I I think we need to give them time to let's attempt to see if we can simplify and solve this issue before we take action on it.
I I agree. I I'm gonna need some more time myself, so that would be fine for me.
Okay.
Other questions on on those substantive changes? Chad, anything else you wanted to touch on on those points?
No, no, I think that uh I think that that's, that's been a a very helpful discussion, and we can go back and and have some uh additional thought and look for ways to 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 accommodate what we're trying to do and in in ways that everybody can understand.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, I will move on. Um, couple of changes to the use table. Um, we are suggesting allowing upper story residential as a permitted use in the neighborhood business district. Um, for whatever reason, that didn't, didn't make it into the use table prior. Also, a a wider ability to accommodate uh restaurants um in the light industrial district that were also um excluded from um that district in in prior versions of the use table. So a little bit of tweaking on the principal use table. Um, we also have been using the term travel trailer throughout the ordinance, and um it was felt that that was confusing and that we needed to replace that with uh recreational vehicle. So we have we've removed the term travel trailer uh from the ordinance and are now using the term recreational vehicle as it pertains to um whether or not you can live in one permanently or or where that might be located on an, on a residential lot um or where it could be parked if serviced. So just some adjustment there. Questions on the um, on the adjustments to the principal and accessory uses? Okay. We went back and and had a careful look at some of the fence standards. Um, the, the current standards measure, um the fence heights. Rec- recall that there are differential fence heights for residential development based on whether you're to the front, to the side or to the rear of the principal structure. Um, that measurement is actually taken um from the setback line, not the building, though the current UDO talks about measuring it from the building. So we are suggesting um clarifying that it's measured from the setback line. We also added a couple of caveats. One is if you have a through lot, a a residential lot that's bounded on the front and the back by streets, um that you can still have a taller privacy fence in the back uh on a, on a through lot. Um, and that if you have a lot of of significant size um and you choose to locate a fence outside of any required side or rear setbacks, then that fence could have uh an increased height from six feet to eight feet. So we've allowed um a minor increase in fence height for those privacy fences that are on lots that are are big enough um to accommodate fences inside the building envelope. So some fairly significant changes, at least with respect to residential fencing, mostly aimed at increased privacy. We um talked a lot about home occupation um and the fact that a lot, I'm sorry, please.
Fences, real quick, would that potentially allow for an eight foot fence on a front yard? Okay, yeah, okay. So even if there's, there's a setback, you have a gap between the setback and the house.
Correct, correct.
What an A, okay.
Not in, not in between the principal structure and this, and the street that it faces, no.
Thank you.
Good question. Um, so home occupation, um, right now, there's a prohibition on home occupations within detached accessory structures. Um, and um with with these days and times, we we've realized that maybe some people might be using um their garage or space above their garage for an office or something like that. Um, and so we decided to remove the prohibition of home occupations within detached accessory structures subject to some size limitations. So um you have about half of that first floor floor plate that can be used um as as home occupation space in your detached accessory structure. So just trying to recognize that more people are working from home uh and are choosing to to do that from detached uh accessory structures on their properties.
I think that's a great idea, Chad. I I believe that's going to become even more prominent uh even, even as we go forward.
Agreed.
Is there, I I'm looking over that. It it's somewhat clarified is kind of how you differentiate, but as far as the delineation of that and the enforcement.
Well, you know, I, yeah, the 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 home occupation size limitations are always going to be a challenge, and I think it'll have to fall on the enforcement officer to exercise some discretion. Um, I definitely think from a common sense standpoint, we should not be um asking zoning enforcement officers to enter dwellings um or anything like that, but to try to make that determination from the outside if necessary, and frankly, to give that homeowner the benefit of the doubt.
When it starts to become a nuisance in the neighborhood, it does give some guidance.
Right, right. At that point, I think we could be more serious about whether or not that um detached accessory, home occupation um floor area is excessive and 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 is contributing to um, you know, to a nuisance or or negative impact on adjacent properties. But until such time as a complaint's filed, I would suggest that we um, you know, we 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 take a careful approach.
Other questions on those?
All right, we're about halfway done. Um, couple other items. Um, we did incorporate the full blush of the food truck and pushcart vendor standards from the city code into uh the temporary use provisions on page four dash seventy four. Um, we also removed gra- the ability to have gravel paving uh for overflow parking for some uses. Um, we were having issues with um being able to determine what was or was not overflow, uh and it was creating some administrative hardships for staff. Um, and the decision was made that we would probably likely be better off by removing um the ability to do gravel in overflow parking for some uses. This does not impact industrial development. Industrial development can have gravel park paving, and that's fine. This is for the litany of listed uses on page five dash ten, um religious assembly and and other uses like that. So that was done again to simplify administration.
Um, question on fourteen, which is the food truck item.
Yes.
In moving this into this part of the code, is there any functional change in the way that's deployed?
No, not at all.
In rereading over this, I would like for council potentially flag food trucks at a a later date, especially with the kind of pandemic economy mindset and some of the reports indicating the percentages of restaurants that may fail. Um, looking at how do we continue to enable food entrepreneurs to have a place in the community? Because right now, these are really. Because right now, these are really restrictive, especially in the C B D. About enabling food truck operation. And I understand why we put some of those in in the first place, but. And looking forward to what our economy looks like post pandemic. These may be. I think too cumbersome to enable our food entrepreneurs to prosper and innovate. Would council be amenable to a future discussion on that?
Are you talking about repealing that?
Talking about modifications because really what we've done is, especially in the C B D where we. We say you can have a food truck, but it's got to be on a private lot. Well, you look at the C B D. It's all public lots. There are only a small handful of private owned lots. So we've effectively. Written them out of being able to operate. And we've write them back in by having a street closure, but. You still make it exceedingly cumbersome. And when you look at the thriving kind of food truck and food economy of of other downtown areas. We we've disabled that economy with these rules.
I mean, I I would be open to discussing the entire piece again, because likewise, I've received numerous complaints from. Lots, private lots that are housing. Food trucks that are really impeding traffic there on the corner. It's sightline issues. So I think I think the entire thing needs to be revamped a little bit.
I agree. I'd I'd like to take a look at it and then more detail later.
Pardon staff, is that something we could possibly bring back at maybe a December or January work session? Pardon, are you on mute?
Yes, we can do that for sure.
May maybe we should all sort of provide them some feedback as what our concerns are or what we'd like to see so they have jumping off point.
Yeah.
Great.
So council members, if you could, please send any comments, areas for consideration or inquiry. And other thoughts to staff, and then we'll bring that back as a work session discussion. Likely December, possibly January.
So it sounds like go ahead and include this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just making it. Meshing the documents. That's what it sounds like. Yeah, I don't want to tear this one open because right now, because I think it does need some of that, but. In the way this was presented, it forced a rereading of it. Any other questions on item fourteen on the list? Food truck and pushcart vendors? All right, Chad, back to you.
Thank you. We are now in chapter five, the development standards. So basically, a couple of changes here that that I'll call to your attention. We had included some standards that allow the possibility of decorative grasses around parking lots. As a practical matter. The the decorative grasses often have to be cut. To continue to prosper and upon cutting no longer meet the the screening requirement. So. That that provision was removed. We also clarified. That landscaping material on different sites can't be credited towards the landscaping requirements. On a site that that development is is working on. In other words, you cannot use your neighbor's landscaping. Towards your landscaping requirements. And then finally. That existing shrubs can't be credited towards existing landscaping requirements. Existing trees, yes, existing shrubs, no.
All right, any questions on those items?
Okay, we're going to spend the next few minutes talking about signs. We spent a fair amount of time. On signs. So staff has had about a year to work with these and has received. I guess a fair amount of discussion and concern from members of the the business community there in Burlington. And. So we spent. Fairly long amount of time looking at. Existing signage that's in place and thinking about ways that we could. Add a little bit of flexibility to the provisions, but at the same time. Continue to to incentivize high quality signage. So. We've got a handful of changes to the sign regulations. Probably ninety percent of the sign regulations are unaffected at all, but there are a couple of adjustments. To be made, and I'd like to talk with you about those. First and foremost. We wanted to talk about removal of dilapidated or obsolete signs and pole signs in particular. As you recall, poll signs are listed as a a prohibited sign type. In the city and we wanted to clarify. While this was understood as a matter of practice, it wasn't outwardly described. To to a sufficient degree in the U D O that the establishment of a new ground sign or an electronic message board. On a lot that had an existing pole sign would require the removal of the pole sign. That you that the business establishment would not be able to have the pole sign and the ground, the new ground sign or E M B. So that that requirement was clarified. We also added, you'll recall that off premise signage, generally speaking, is not permitted. In the city's planning jurisdiction. However, this has created some problems for. Our shopping center and campus style developments that have multiple lots in them. And some of those lots do not have frontage on the road where the development is accessed from. So. They don't have the ability to to place signage. On the on the vehicular accessway that serves their lot and. Because they're on a different lot, placement of signage for for their business would would by default become. Off premise signage. And so the compromise that we are suggesting is the establishment of a of a shared ground sign. And a shared ground sign is one that is shared by two or more uses. In the same development that is drawn or shown on the same site plan and same subdivision. So it's planned as a unified whole. Those two uses cannot be across the street from one another. And that development would be limited to one shared ground sign. That ground sign could have signage. For the business establishment on the lot where it was located as well as signage for. The other businesses that were inside the same development, but on different lots. You don't get a larger sign. You don't get a taller sign. What you do get is the ability to advertise. Tenants or components of that development that are not on the same lot. It's very tailored. It's very strategic, very limited, and it's focused on accommodating those multi lot developments where some lots don't have road frontage.
Can I ask staff, I I know we've had several situations come up in the last maybe sixty days. What's been recommended by Chad here? No one, can can you give me an idea of how that would impact some of the concerns we've had voiced to? To to us and to staff?
Yeah, I think a good example is is the Lidl site. They don't have access to the church street. So this, you know, if the neighboring property owners were open to working with them. That would allow them to have some type of sign presence along the corridor. So I think that's one good example. I think the the some of the other concerns that were expressed to us, I think Chad's gonna. Go over that and I think it's the next slide or two.
Yes.
That's going to cover some of the other issues we had in terms of, you know, sign size and things of that nature.
Review that Lidl slide again and help me with what you're saying there, Nolan.
So if you recall, you know, the ball, the old bowling alley structure was behind. The dentist office, the A B C store there. And so Lidl's going in in that same location. They're behind. They're not. Their their parcel isn't, you know, out front, up against the right of way on church street. So. You know, any of their signage is going to be back into the site. But this would allow, again, if if the adjacent property owners were amenable and they could work it out. A a shared ground sign that, you know, would allow legal to put signage. On on that ground sign. And you could see that, you know, from church street.
In that situation. I would think in that situation particularly, the the actual development of the property in the beginning. Was the back part of the of the of the of the lot. That was the first thing developed. The property that now faces or nearest to church street. What with the bank and the dentist office, the A B C store was developed lately, of course, obviously at a later time. And I would imagine the property was sold to a different person. So I I I do see what you're saying here. We need to be able to give the people. In the back there, some option if we can to have some signage. I I agree with, I I think that's something that we need to take a hard look at. We have to, I believe.
So who would be the two or more uses in that case? I mean, who's the other use?
Well, the only other, well, the the that particular area there would be, I'm not sure how the parcels are divided up. You just got one business in front of that particular, I believe, particular of the Lidl site. Is that correct?
Well, you've got.
Well, the way I understood it is it was only, you can only do that if it would serve two or more businesses in the same development. Well, if it's just one business back there, how how does that solve the problem?
So my, well, Chad, feel free to chime in. My understanding is, for example, you know, I mean, there's several businesses that. Are adjacent or but church street. So for their ground sign, you know, they would be able to put a Lidl sign on unless I'm missing the point here. Or missing the question. That that just gives presence along church street. You could have both, both businesses could have signage on that ground sign.
That that is exactly right. What we are trying to do is create a a mechanism where an offsite use. Can have signage on a lot that is under separate ownership. And we wanted to be very careful about how we accommodated that. And so the we placed a handful of limitations on the ability to do that, not least of which is that. Those uses come forward with some kind of site plan. So that everybody understands that those two owners are working together, that this has been a a unified process. And that there is only one ground sign allowed on the site where the shared ground sign is located. So. You know, in effect, that landowner is giving up space on for on that that could be utilized for their ground sign. To another party. And we wanted to make sure that that was tracked, that that it was understood. And that we maintained a handle on it. And so that's why you see the limitations about the number of signs and where they can be located. And the requirement that those landowners work together so that we don't have basically musical signs happening along the the roadway front.
Yeah, I was gonna say you almost tread into billboard territory.
Yes, we, this was a tough problem to solve.
Like questions or comments, concerns on that one?
What occurs, let me ask you, what would occur then in that similar situation if a a piece of property has been developed? On a major corridor, let's say. In this case, a large parking lot in front of it. But then there was enough space there for additional development. Same thing, I think we're talking about the same site here. And 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 then could could a separate development then be built? And where will they put their sign at then? If there was already a ground sign out there? Well, they have to with the with the sale of the property after agree to allow them to put a put a ground. Or or be involved in the the original sign that was on the property.
Right, it's a good question. So one option is the owner could could maintain a sliver of frontage on the lot. So that their ground sign could stay there, or they could enter into agreement on a shared ground sign on the resold piece property.
Comes down to the developer of those parcels and how they segment them up and give away their frontage.
Right. It it all comes down to frontage management and whether or not the property that is giving up its frontage. Holds on to some for purposes of signage or sells it all and sort of rolls the dice with respect to the ability to have a. A negotiated shared ground sign.
Seems like for most would want to retain some control of that property to be able to guarantee it to their their usage rather than hoping for an agreement.
Hard to say, you know, there's new roads come in and things happen. I mean, you know, yeah, but yes, I I agree.
My understanding, Chad, is you you don't get your ground sign and. Big part of a shared ground sign. So in essence, you're, you you know, it helps towards our goal of trying to reduce signage.
Yes.
So that I'll I'll make that point, too.
Yeah, we were very sensitive to 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 increasing the total number of signs. We did not want to do that.
Other questions on that?
Technically, if I developed a a lot or a piece of property and I was the first one in. And my my majority of my development in the beginning was further off the street. When I went in and did a a sign request, if I ever had any thoughts of development at a later date. On the front part of the property that's more adjacent to the main thoroughfare. I would need to be able to go in and ask for signage large enough. That then Mike could be construed over if I sold that property for another developers. Am I correct then?
Sure, I mean, there's there's an outward limit to the size of the ground sign that you can have, and I assume that most. Retail uses would pursue the the maximum size they had available. We did incorporate into the provisions. Some incentives in the form of increased height and increased face area as the ground sign moves away from the road right of way. In other words. The farther back you get from the right of way edge, the larger the sign can be. But you know, that's part of the the internal calculus of a developer in terms of making a decision about. Where they'd like to place their sign and how large they'd like it to be.
Anything else on that? All right, Chad.
I'm gonna talk about ground signs for a second. I'm actually gonna go off of this slide. I'm gonna cover all of these points with you, but I'd like to show you. Let me actually start with this. So. We we had a a lot of commentary from the from the development community about. How large ground signs could be and that the standards that we were promulgating were. Too small. And so after some some very, very careful discussion. And a lot of exploration of sign regulations and in other communities and what's going on in Burlington. What we are suggesting be done. There's probably about four changes that we would suggest be made to ground signs. First and foremost. Increases in the max sign face area from nine square feet to twelve square feet in the residential districts. And an increase from one hundred square feet to one hundred and fifty square feet. In the general business and industrial districts. This image is a conceptual image. Obviously, there are three different kinds of signs here. There's the blue sign associated with the Academy of Sports. Enterprise. It's about one thousand and fifty square feet in size corresponding to this blue sort of field. There's a yellow square. This is a hundred square feet compared to what the academy sign would be. So this is what the current standard would allow. For a ground sign. What is suggested inside the the general business and industrial districts is that we go from a one hundred square foot. Ground sign to a one hundred and fifty square foot ground sign. 100 square foot ground sign to a 150 square foot ground sign. Um, so that's one change. I'm gonna back up now. Um, one part of that change is some recognition of features on signage that we want to continue to encourage, but that we, we, we weren't able to encourage because of the way that we were calculating sign face area for ground signs. And what I mean by that is this. We want to encourage ground signs that have landscaping around the base. And unfortunately, right now, what we're getting is this. And the reason we're getting this is because this foundation area associated with a ground sign counts toward the maximum fo- sign face area that's allowed. So why would someone put landscaping material in front of this if it blocks their sign? Um, to deal with that, we are suggesting that the first 36 inches of ground sign be exempted from height and face area requirements if permanent evergreen landscaping is installed all the way around the base of the sign. So that's one change that we made. Or what, that we're suggesting. Another change that we're suggesting is the ability for uh, a, a ground signs base to project outwards from the sign face area by six inches on either side or, or the front or back. Um, in recognition that in some cases, depending on, upon how the sign is constructed, it might actually sit on a different, on a base of a different material. And that different material might project outwards from the face of the sign slightly, uh, say six inches. So we want to allow that to take place. Um, perhaps the largest change to the ground sign provisions that we want to suggest are some incentives for uh, folks who are doing ground signs to incorporate architectural embellishments. And so you zoom in a little bit. When we talk about architectural embellishments, we are talking about design treatments to the sides or possibly the tops of the sign um, as a means of making it look better, making it fit better with the use that it's associated with. So this is a good example where they've picked up the pilaster design with the bricks and the, and the uh, cornice feature at the top and so forth. So this sign kind of speaks to the use it serves from a design standpoint and all felt that that was a, a good thing that we should encourage. The current standards as drafted would count those brick pilasters and, and cornice tops uh, as sign area uh, and would probably result in a very different looking sign than what we see here. Uh, so what we would suggest be done um, is that we uh, make some allowances for these kinds of embellishments, these architectural embellishments that do not include sign copy in the range of a foot to a foot and a half on either side of the sign face. Um, and anywhere from 12 to 18 inches at, on the top of the sign. Um, to encourage folks to, to make their ground signs look better. Do they have to include these? No, they don't. If they choose to, um, they're not penalized for it uh, in terms of the amount of sign area that they can have. So that is the, the essence of the change. This is a um, let me zoom out a little bit more. This is in essence what we're talking about. A sign face area of 150 square feet in the general business and industrial districts. The ability to accommodate 18 inch wide architectural embellishments on either side. The ability to accommodate some sort of cornice or cap feature at the top of the sign, uh, 18 inches in height. The ability for the foundation to project outward um, by six inches on either side and credits towards um, this foundation area if evergreen plantings are included at the base. So again, we are not talking about tons and tons of new signage. You should not expect to see all new ground signs in Burlington uh, rivaling the Academy Sports sign. On the other hand, um, we are talking about a, a very modest increase in the amount of sign face area that's allowed. Um, at least in the most intense zoning districts with a recognition of um, these, these embellishments that we'd like to encourage. So that's, that's the essence of the, of the ground sign changes.
Questions on that? Seems like a good kind of middle ground. And again, the consideration for making it fit the surroundings is nice, especially with the landscape hedging.
Really commend your staff for their work on this. Um, this is the culmination of a lot of people's effort, believe me. Um, this was very well thought out, uh, and I, and I think a, a beautiful compromise. Onto wall signs. Our next beautiful compromise. Again, a, a series of, of, of things that I'm going to talk about here, but let me go and show you um, what the situation is at this point. So like ground signs, we heard from the development community that the wall sign face areas were insufficient. That there were possibly public safety challenges from having wall signage that was too small, too difficult to see from a moving vehicle um, on the street, particularly at the back of a uh, inline shopping center um, or a multi-tenant structure. And so after some, some careful consideration uh, and, and discussion about how do we deal with this problem but not create um, a, a plethora of, of new wall signage? We are suggesting a handful of changes. Um, increasing the, the max, the maximum wall sign face area from a half of a square foot per linear foot of facade up to a one-to-one ratio, one square foot of signage for one square foot of facade in the MX and the central business districts. In the more in- intense general business and industrial districts, we are suggesting a lesser of option. And what I mean by that is that the standards would be revised to allow the lesser of one and a half square feet of wall signage per foot of frontage or a maximum of 300 square feet of wall sign on the primary facade. Uh, as well as some allowance for wall signage on secondary or tertiary facades. In other words, sides and rears. Um, the amount of square footage of wall sign is, is cut in half on side and, and wa- and rear walls. Um, and the, the, the ratio um, is 50% less uh, on those side and rear walls. So what we are trying to do is allow some larger wall signage going from this to something more like this. This Chipotle sign, the wall signs associated with this use are pre U D O. Um, and after examining an awful lot of wall signage in the community, um, I think that staff and the consulting team agreed that the, 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 the signage size associated with this use and the, the one and a half square feet of signage area per facade uh, was, was a sensible compromise that helped deal with concerns over public safety from wall signage that was too small, but that didn't give away the store uh, in terms of the amount of wall sign um, that could be accommodated. We also um, recognized that there are um, some different needs for wall signage from large retail establishments. Think of your large grocery stores, your Targets, your Walmarts, um, et cetera. Um, who might have multiple signs on their facade. A grocery store might have the logo for the store chain. Uh, it might also have the words pharmacy or um, dining area or um, you know, sporting goods or bakery. Uh, and so what we wanted to do was continue to recognize the need for that signage but fetter the ability to have that signage based on the maximum square footage amounts that we, we are suggesting be added. So we are allowing more smaller signs on these large retail buildings. Finally, the last change um, that we are suggesting is that wall signage needs to be 18 inches from the corner or 18 inches from the edge of the multi-tenant space. And in cases where there's a wall sign on a side or a rear of a building that abuts a residential use, that that sign not be illuminated. So we're trying to be sensitive to the residential uses that might be impacted by a uh, an illuminated sign. So these are the changes, much like with the ground-based sign approach. We wanted something that was easy to administer, common sense, but recognized the, the, what was going on with trends in retail and the need to have signage that was of sufficient size to be seen. Questions on the wall sign changes?
I, I like the Chipotle proposal uh, to be able to make that universal on the other side of the, of that particular project because it um, I've actually had a couple of people complain to me about um, you mentioned safety, just trying to, to look over to that corner and see what those shops were as I've been going down Huffman Mill Road.
Right. Right, and that was, that, that's what guided us was that, that desire to make sure that public safety could be maintained.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
It's all right. Where those ground signs, uh, they would include, that Academy Sports sign would include these businesses as well. Isn't that right?
Uh, could the academy sign incorporate signage for individual tenants? Yes, it could.
Well, I agree that, that you can't tell from Huffman Mill Road what those stores are. So I understand their frustration. Um, I think it looks better. But that, that's not really the point. Well, it is the point. It is part of the point. So I'm not going to push back against it.
We, we, we really tried to compromise here.
I understand.
All right, any other questions, comments on these?
Oh, I'm sorry. Are we ready to move on, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay, um, my time is short, so I'm going to wrap it up. Um, these are the subdivision changes. Um, we just added some clarifications about existing lots of record that developed on Wells or Septic. Um, and then there was a change on the site. Uh, and we added the clarification that, you know, if you were going to, to, to take down a building uh, or develop a vacant lot of record, um, and there was water in the street or, or on an adjacent property or sewer uh, on, on the street or an adjacent property that you would need to connect. So we just wanted to add that, that clarity. This is primarily aimed at those existing lots of record where redevelopment was happening. And I, I mentioned the pole signs that, you know, if you've got a pole sign, it needs to be removed before you could get a new ground or E M B.
Any questions on those? All right.
That is the gist of the staff-generated changes. Again, there were about 31 of them. Um, the top five changes in 160D, uh, again, most of these 160D related changes were procedural in nature. Um, it was really a good governance bill. It didn't make a lot of substantive change to how we're doing business. However, um, there were some adjustments, um, and those are listed here. For example, um, vested rights. Uh, the statutes now add some additional um, clarity on timing of vested rights. There are conflict of interest provisions that all decision makers need to follow. Um, any condition of approval needs to be uh, consented to in writing by the applicant. Um, there is an increased ability for an applicant to proceed directly to Superior Court um, with appeals of some decisions and determinations. Um, so that's something to be aware of. And then finally, um, permit revocation needs to follow the same procedure as was used for the establishment of the permit in the first place. So those are the biggies. There were again about 45 or so changes that we made. Um, but these are the ones that were of, of most significant significance.
Any questions on those?
Chad, I have one question. When is 160D effective? Is it January 1?
That's a, that's a great question and thanks for asking it. It's kind of been a moving target. So when it was originally drafted, it was supposed to be January 1 of 2021. They changed it twice, three times. Where we are with it right now is if you have adopted your changes, it can become effective immediately. If you have not adopted your changes, it becomes effective upon your adoption of those changes.
Or not later than July 1?
July 1 of 2021 is the drop dead date for adoption.
That, that's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify that.
You are absolutely correct.
Any other council questions? All right, Chad, anything else for us?
Uh, no, sir. Thank you very much. We will go back and um, explore this uh, triplex quadruplex issue. Uh, not gonna rush it. If we're able to pu- to pull something together that we're comfortable with uh, by the 20th, we'll bring it forward. If not, we'll bring it forward in the next round. And I should do thank you for your time.
Counsel, any other questions?
Thanks, Chad. Good work.
Big thank you to staff too. I think, as mentioned multiple times in this presentation, the uh, I appreciate the boots-on-the-ground approach to getting out and looking at how these things are actually implemented in our community um, and how they best serve our community. So I think there's no better, no better method than using practical guidance from, from our businesses and, and community organizations and how they want to deploy these things. So these are organic documents that we need to evolve with, with the way that our community evolves. So, thank you, staff. Appreciate that extra effort.
Thank you.
Looking at our agenda, we are at about 7:05. I'm gonna, if counsel's amenable to it, take a five-minute break and then we'll resume. Um, and so if everyone could meet back here in five minutes. Any objections, counsel, on that?
You talked me into it. Thank you.
All right.
All right, everyone, if you could come back in, can focus just a moment. And Jim, you've got a hard stop at seven thirty, right?
Yeah, reasonably close.
Okay. And we're we're gonna try to do this economic development quarterly update, and if it's amenable to you, we could either proceed with the agenda or we could jump to the chicken and fowl ordinance, well, if you still got some time.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever's the pleasure of council, I don't mind waiting if you'd like to.
You know, I think we will, we want you to present, and then we'll see where we land at time.
Very good.
All right, everyone. Looks like we've got all of our council members back, so we will resume with item C, Economic Development Quarterly Update, and we'll recognize our Economic Development Director, Peter Bishop.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um I will actually try to be brief in the understanding of time, uh so thank you very much uh for the opportunity to be here, I will be sharing my screen for a presentation. Um let's see, so I'll I'll await my permission to do so. Um. Um I don't know if John or Scott could help me out with that, oh, there we go, you got it, all right.
That screen is coming up now, you've got it.
Very good. So my uh presentation agenda today, uh I'm going to review some of the COVID nineteen impacts and look at some of the data for the Burlington M S A and the city of Burlington. Uh and review what businesses have been feeling uh out there um in this update. Uh we'll talk about some local, federal, and state resources that are available to businesses and how they can find those resources and also how they can find assistance to interpret and apply to those resources. And then finally, uh as I always like to do in these reports, share some good news, some project updates uh and some more, so end on a on a more positive note after we review some of this COVID information. Um I will be getting on a roll most likely in this presentation, so please, council members, uh stop me if you have a question or want to point something out in one of these slides. So COVID obviously has had a significant impact on the business community throughout the United States, throughout the world, uh for that matter. Um and it's certainly been acute here in the city of Burlington. Um this graph that I'm showing you, hopefully that you're able to see it, but um you can see the extreme dip that occurred uh for business and jobs um from uh March and April with some uh recovery starting in in the later months of May, June, July, and August. Um the the industries that are our biggest in the city of Burlington are from top to bottom. Um transportation and um and material moving, so distribution, uh transit and delivery. Um number two would be health and education, uh number three is manufacturing, and number four is uh I'm sorry, leisure and hospitality. Um and obviously, leisure and hospitality is the industry that's taken the brunt of the COVID. Um uh hit, as you'll see, uh since the beginning of this year, uh thirty one hundred jobs in uh leisure and hospitality uh have left the the um the county, this is the um the M S A or the Metropolitan Statistical Area, which is the borders of Alamance County. Um we've lost a thousand jobs in professional and business services. Uh you can see where that would make sense, as businesses need additional marketing or uh other in person type of needs. Uh clients, uh you know, moved back on some of those needs during uh during the COVID period. Um interestingly enough, manufacturing uh lost a lot of jobs, despite us having a a very strong manufacturing base in Burlington and Alamance County, and most of those being essential businesses that were manufacturing goods that were needed throughout the pandemic. We still saw significant furloughs and job losses in manufacturing. Um and then finally, uh one of the larger one of the larger uh losses um was also in um I beg your pardon, I lost my place there for a second. Um no, I think I covered the biggest losses that we have there, but but all told, um in the M S A throughout the county, we're talking about sixty four hundred total jobs that are not here today that were here on January the first, and that's a that uh accounts to about eleven percent of the total active workforce uh here in the city of Burlington, uh so or not in the city of Burlington, rather in the M S A. Um so although this is countywide data, it certainly can be extrapolated to our situation that there's been significant impact uh mostly in the uh in the leisure and hospitality sectors and in the manufacturing uh sector as well. We had a lot of these significant impacts in small businesses as well, and similar to personal finances. Um a lot of data has shown that businesses very rarely kept more than two weeks to three weeks worth of payroll and other expenses in their savings. So because of that, uh that that little bit of savings that were around, a lot of small businesses uh were hurt disproportionately compared to others. Um you've heard the phrase cash is king, uh mentioned very frequently throughout this pandemic, and that certainly was the case for businesses and especially small businesses. Those are small and micro businesses that had a several months worth of savings uh have been able to survive much more than others. Um and uh so the impact has been significant, uh I'm sure we all know a small business owner or a micro uh enterprise uh that is no longer operational right now that was before. Um and and so that's a certainly a very sad story for Burlington. Um but what has been positive, uh I'll I'll go back a few slides here. Is that we are seeing a rebound in these numbers. So in in June, July, and August, we've seen positive uh additions to uh the economy as things have opened up uh as some of the phased reopening has occurred in North Carolina. Um certainly, uh the city is starting to do some more events now, so we're bringing on some of the staff that we have furloughed other companies that have been uh that are starting to operate now. Uh restaurants are gaining capacity, retail places have been open, and then some other entertainment venues which are able to open at limited capacity now. They'll start to bring on some employees as well if they were able to weather the storm. So these are the unemployment rates that we experienced in this uh eight month period of COVID, and obviously, we were at historically low unemployment. Uh some would even argue that it was too low, that there wasn't enough, uh there weren't enough available workers for new jobs and new opportunities coming to the city. Um that has certainly changed in this eight month period. Um a huge spike in unemployment as we saw nationwide uh in March and April. Uh and then things are starting to settle down with employment, folks are going back to work, a lot of the benefits have uh have dried up or evaporated from the federal level and even the state level. Um so folks are getting back to work and we're seeing a steady decline in that unemployment rate. Um the city of Burlington right now is currently at eight point two percent unemployment, and the M S A and the overall county is at uh six point seven percent. So Burlington is a little bit higher than the county as a whole in unemployment, and I think that is a directly related to the higher number of leisure and hospitality businesses and event and other services businesses that we have in Burlington. You know, Burlington Burlington being sort of the retail center for Alamance County. Um we feel the benefits more strongly, but we also feel the losses more strongly when there's a hit to retail leisure and hospitality. So the most important part of understanding the pain is what what resources are available for businesses to help? How can we uh be a resource for them in the Economic Development Office? How can city programs and other programs be leveraged for their benefit? So in in COVID, there have been a couple different cycles of grants that have gone through. Um of course, we had uh some grants and loan programs through the Small Business Administration and the CARES Act, now all many of those have now since ended. Uh so this represents the most up to date uh information we have on available loans, uh grants and services. Um the city of Burlington and uh I believe um Planning Director Mike Nun will talk a little bit about this in the next presentation. Um the city of Burlington has a uh Community Development Block Grant Program focused on uh L M I or low to moderate income owned or benefiting um micro enterprise. Uh micro enterprises are defined as five employees or less, and this program is targeted toward folks who business owners who are low to moderate income or their employees who are low to moderate income. And we've developed a seven thousand dollar grant program for applicants. Um and we have a links through a a software system, it's it's pretty uh simple to apply if you're eligible. Uh that's a program that's been live for a couple of weeks in Burlington. We're finalizing our first grant awards to two businesses, we're very excited about that. And we have several other applications in the hopper of folks uh seeking funds. Um so we're excited about this program, it's relatively new for us, and we've uh we're about to issue our first uh grant checks to businesses through that program. Um we've got a little over seventy thousand dollars in that program and possibly could uh get some more through supplemental C D B G uh appropriations to the city. Uh another very new grant program through the North Carolina Department of Commerce is specifically targeting entertainment businesses, bars, restaurants, uh indoor playgrounds, um the Kids Zone, indoor trampoline parks, um movie theaters, those type of things. And this is called the North Carolina Mortgage Utility Real uh and Utility Rent Relief Fund. Uh and it is a grant program, it offers up to fifty thousand dollars for entertainment based businesses. Uh I believe there's a pot of about forty million that's been allocated for this program through the uh State Department of Commerce. Uh so this application just went live late last week. Um so I would encourage folks to check out this program, the North Carolina M U R R Mortgage Utility and Rent Relief Program through the state of North Carolina Department of Commerce. Those are the primary grants that are available on the uh on the public side. There are a couple of small grants on nonprofit and for profit uh websites that are out there. Um but they are on the smaller level, one to two thousand dollars to help businesses, uh those were not included in this description. Uh from a debt standpoint, for folks looking to get loans, there are actually plenty of loan resources that are available for business. The first one that's uh I'm going to talk about is actually a local program that was started through a consortium of the uh Alamance County using their COVID nineteen funds. Um self-help credit union, the Alamance Community Foundation, and Alamance Community College. Uh they are all working together to process um loans, twenty five thousand dollars is the cap for Alamance based businesses that ever experienced COVID losses. Um that's a a new program for the county, I don't believe Alamance County's ever done a revolving loan fund program before. Um so this is new, this is eligible for all businesses in the city of Burlington because you are in Alamance County. Um so that is a a local tool using some of a a regional C D F I uh Community Development Finance Institution and Self-Help a and also partnering with our chambers, so um there there is assistance that goes with that loan application through the Chamber and the Alamance uh Community College Small Business Center. Uh so a great local program that's been stood up in response to some of the struggles that folks have been having here. Uh the N C Recovery Loans Program is run through the North Carolina Rural Center, and it has a fifty thousand dollar cap as well. Um that program provides zero interest and zero payments for the first eighteen months, but it is still a loan, it does still need to be repaid. Uh and then there is a very low interest rate and term after that, so a very attractive financing program run through the North Carolina Rural Center. You do not need to be a rural based business to apply and and be a part of that. Um and uh so that that's another great program uh that's available. Um we heard from Michael Blair earlier today with the Piedmont Triad Regional Council of Governments. That organization operates a revolving loan fund as well, targeting uh COVID impacted businesses uh called their Lights On Revolving Loan Fund. Uh so another potential option uh using P T R C uh to get some funding to help your business. And then the last two are, they're not loan programs themselves, they're actual capital funds that buy loans from banks. So the first uh Cornerstone Community Capital is a program that is funded via Truist Bank, and that's the bank that formed from B B and T and SunTrust merger. They made a large donation to the uh N C Rural Center to basically uh to go to C D F Is or these community development financial institutions to then buy loans that are primarily sourced for minority businesses. So this is a source of capital that's going to allow banks more flexibility to participate on financing um minority based businesses recovering from COVID, a a new source of capital that's able to, again, purchase loans from banks and be a financial partner uh of sort of from the side door rather than the front door. And the Federal Reserve Main Street Lending Program is very similar. Uh you go to your typical bank or financial institution and apply using their underwriting terms and application, and then the Fed uh turns around and buys a certain portion of those loans or a participation portion of those loans from the bank that originates them. So that one's probably the simplest, you just walk into your typical bank looking for a loan program and negotiate terms, and then the Fed turns around and buys the bank, so it gives the bank more flexibility to provide more capital uh and to do more loans to help business. Again, those are all loan programs and uh some interesting statistics from the North Carolina Main Street Center, the National Main Street Center, gosh, the National Academy of Sciences and others, I've been uh doing some research on uh small business behavior. Um seventy percent of small businesses surveyed, and that's a combination of statistics of those three studies, are not interested in getting more debt. They do not want to get another loan, they're very nervous about that. So only about twenty percent of respondents, and these are thousands of respondents, were interested in using a line of credit, a credit card, or a new loan facility to keep their businesses open. Most openly stated that their goal was to not increase their debt load during COVID. So we've seen a lot more interest in grant programs and a lot less interest in these loan programs that have been offered. Um in fact, some of these loan programs have not been oversubscribed, and there's still plenty of funding available in them. So then the last piece of business assistance related to COVID is actual services, so somebody who can serve as a consultant to your business to help you uh pivot, to help you develop a resiliency plan, to help you identify funding and what you can afford possibly to continue operating business. All those different services are available right here in Burlington locally, and they start with us at the Economic Development Office. Myself, our project manager Blake Moyer, and if you're a downtown business, Sarah Beth Hardy, our downtown manager, are all available for one-on-one meetings, Zoom meetings, and other opportunities to walk you through a process of i- identifying needs and finding the proper funding. But we're not the only ones who are on that business support team that are available to help. Uh obviously, the Alamance County um or the Alamance Community College Small Business Center, Mr. Urban Allen, who runs that, is also available for consultation. Our North Carolina Small Business and Technology Development Center, or N C S B T D C also has counselors that are mobile and and also available virtually. Uh those two organizations, the the small business centers of the Community College System and the S B T D C, they both received both federal and state COVID funds to add more counselors, add more um free online courses for folks to learn resiliency in a self-guided format using webinars uh and more dollars to uh to 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 market their services out there to businesses. Um so uh our office for the S B T D C, for example, is in Chapel Hill, I happen to be the Chair of the Regional Advisory Board, and uh they've just brought on two additional business counselors who've I've spoken to. And they've just brought on two additional business counselors who I've spoken to. One of them is actually based in Elon and is a former an Elon graduate. So we now have a business counselor for the SBTDC office right here in our backyard in Burlington that's available to help. I I mentioned the Alamance County libraries. Folks don't realize the free access that you have to great data and information through our library system. But even better, the Alamance Library System has a partnership and a grant through EBSCO Host, a data services company to provide the Ice House Entrepreneurship Training Program to individuals in the city of Burlington. They just recently received this grant and will be rolling out a program soon, but I wanted to make folks aware and to have their their ears perked for future announcements of Ice House Entrepreneurship Training being held most likely virtually via May Memorial Library in the Alamance Library System. That is a great partner and a great tool that I think is sometimes underutilized. Now, the the library buildings themselves are not necessarily open, but the librarians are available to consult digitally. And of course, all the collections are available digitally these days. And then last but not least, our large state organization and economic development partner, the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina. They operate several programs to provide business services. They also provide a hotline called Business Link North Carolina, which answers questions for free and directs folks who have questions about state resources, specifically more about how to start a business and how to get going in business. And that's something that we see a lot of and certainly with the last recession. And we're seeing some in this pandemic as folks who have lost their full-time job are now following that entrepreneurial dream. And we want to help support that dream and help it to to success and fruition through some of the different programs offered at the state and regional level. So I there are definitely grants. There are definitely loans available, but I would stress to folks who are paying attention to this presentation and possibly looking at it later to reach out to some individual services. Because we certainly found in the PPP and the idle, those two SBA emergency loan programs that came up. Folks really needed some help understanding what they were eligible for, what they could possibly apply for and use those funds for. And that's something certainly small and micro businesses don't have at their at their beck and call is a great business advisor that can assist them in making decisions. So we're certainly here with a team that's ready to help.
Peter, on the list of resources that you provided on two slides before. I know one of the concerns that we're running into now is some businesses may have gotten a PPP, but that hasn't lasted them very long. Are any of these available to businesses who may have already received some type of support?
So yes and no. There is a federal rule that prevents double dipping of organizations for COVID related funds. However, we're trying to get a deeper interpretation of that statement. And if COVID related funds, I I believe that law is intended to make sure that you don't use different monies for the same obligation. My understanding, and hopefully this bears out with the call we're having with Mr. Blair later in the week, from our perspective. But our hope is that so long as the the actual check written for the obligation is different, it can still be a rent payment. But if it's not the same rent payment or the same contribution, that may not be double dipping. So we're getting a clarification on that specific point. But I will note that the M U R R program, you can double dip in that one so that you are not disqualified if you receive an SBA idle or PPP loan. In in our CDBG program, that's something of an open question on a case by case basis that I think we're going to have to determine. But we may have been interpreting that too strictly before. So we'll have a little bit of clarification with CDBG and HUD staff later this week so that we can make some determinations on those outstanding applications that we have.
Any of the other loans?
Most of the loans, you are disqualified if you've received an idle or an SBA PPP. So I know certainly rapid recovery and lights on. I'd have to check on the Alamance County Revolving Loan Fund, but I I assume that that's there as well to protect against that double dipping law.
Any advocacy you can do there, because I know we're still hearing from businesses of as this pandemic drags on PPP was was supposed to just help you get through that first couple of months and it's it's not helping get through the rest of this. So.
Certainly.
Yep. I appreciate the update. Jim, I know you've got to go. Any questions?
No. Yeah, thank you. All right. Good night, Joe.
Good, sir. Thank you.
Anything else?
So I I wanted to provide also our web resources. I have this. Those resources are all in one document with links and a longer description on the terms of each program. You can find that document using one of these two websites. Using the city of Burlington's Economic Development webpage and our blog service are also the Alamant Strong website. And all of these consortium communities here at the bottom are are the groups that assisted with Alamant Strong and have contributed content. Myself and Blake Moyer in our office are sort of the the engine that makes that tick, but we certainly couldn't do it without a lot of content and support from our partners. And speaking of Alamant Strong, I wanted to share some screenshots of what that page looks like and where you can find this business assistance. Really, Alamant Strong was created by these partners and and us here in Economic Development to create that one-stop shop so that you wouldn't have to dig through different clicks and pages to try to find what you were looking for. If you're an Alamance County business and you're interested in COVID-related support, Alamant Strong is the place to go. It's easy to remember and it's very well organized and clean. So we have, as you see here, descriptions of some of the different financial services that are available. We have a great blog that's gotten excellent content provided from many different agencies throughout the state and throughout the our local community here. Obviously, this is the SBTDC's post, but we've had posts from local attorneys, from local businesses. Businesses who have pivoted to manufacturing PPP has told their story here. We've announced different financial programs using this blog tool and our partners have announced different things here too. So it's a very shareable, great way to get information on what's been happening with local agencies in COVID-19. So if I have any, don't have any questions on the first half of the presentation, I'm going to transition to some of the projects and more of the sunshine on this presentation.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Peter.
Very good. Thank you. So one of the best stories really in Burlington about COVID is our largest employer and headquartered company in LabCorp. LabCorp has done some amazing things during COVID-19 and I I just wanted to take a moment to let people know about how impactful Burlington, Little Burlington's been in this global pandemic. So LabCorp's York Court Laboratory, right there in West Burlington, they have completed more PCR. And let me get my notes to make sure I know what that that stands for again. That is polymerous chain reaction tests. That is the 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 number one most common test that somebody does for COVID. This laboratory here in Burlington has done more of those tests than any other laboratory in the world. They've been averaging between 40,000 to 50,000 tests a day since the midsummer. And they just continue to roll through, creating innovation after innovation for COVID-19 testing. I've got images here. There's the Pixel Self At Home COVID Test that now you can get returned in two days from the time you put it in the mail. I was unlucky enough to have some symptoms a few weeks ago, but lucky enough to test negative. And thankfully, that test only took about 48 hours because we have one of the largest labs in the world doing these types of tests right in our backyard. So LabCorp's done some really amazing things and really stepped up to the plate. Blake Moyer in our office put together this infographic that really sort of explains how quickly they got up to speed and then really into light speed in attacking this pandemic. So starting with the goal of doing 300 tests per day and just to exponentially blow through that to 40,000 to 50,000 is pretty amazing. All the tests that they're doing for the state of North Carolina and really for the Mid-Atlantic region that that lab services. And then all the different help that they've needed to bring on to to make this work. There are a lot of heroes working out in that laboratory and in those planes and in those courier trucks that are really helping folks get the positive or hopefully the negative results that they're looking for through these tests, but a positive experience. And I just wanted to give a shout out to LabCorp, to all their employees and associates who've really kicked butt and shown Burlington proud during this pandemic. While I'm in the shout out mood, you heard a very excellent presentation from downtown manager Sarah Beth Hardy at our last meeting about what downtown's been up to. And and this slide's really a toast to downtown and I guess that's a bit of a pun. I'm in the mood, but we've got six new venues opening in 2021. A lot of those will be bars and restaurants. So you'll be able to take a toast to Burlington at a lot of those different properties. A lot of those properties are are ones that have not changed hands in a long time or haven't been developed. So how do you know when a downtown's really starting to perk up and become a place again? When properties or owners of properties that have been long vacant or dormant start turning on the lights and figuring it out, hey, I we we got something going here. I I have an asset here that has some value that I need to spend some time and effort in. And that's been very exciting to see. Obviously, Main Street and the closures have been a big hit. These two images are from those Main Street closures of of the band playing outside and obviously folks enjoying enjoying the outdoors. And we've got a lot more cooking in downtown, very excited about what's happening there, but I I just wanted to again mention how big of a bright spot that's been in this pandemic. Some other good news from the pandemic. When the CARES Act was announced in the early summer, a lot of money was allocated toward infrastructure projects through the Economic Development Administration. Well, the city of Burlington applied for one of those pots of money for to develop some infrastructure. And we've we've been asked to answer more questions and sort of pass the the first phase of approval in that process. So we applied for three, the total project value was $360,000 to do a sewer extension on White's Kennel Road to serve an existing manufacturer that's expanding innovative knitting. And the initial thumbs up was provided. We've got some more meetings this month to answer a couple of questions and and provide some comfort to the US Economic Development Administration. But if we're successful, the city will be awarded a little over $280,000 toward the construction of that outfall that will support the investment of $3 million and 17 jobs here in Burlington. So we were very excited to get that that email earlier this week. And our fingers are very firmly crossed that we'll be able to answer all their questions to satisfaction and get that project built and have a have a good a good project from those EDA funds. If we are successful, there's certainly a lot of congratulations, but certainly on this call for us, our team of Todd Lambert and Amy Cameron and Bob Patterson really worked hard to get some difficult questions asked about and answered about these projects. There are many others, of course, Blake and others that that put in work on these applications, but we had a very short turnaround time, about two, three weeks that we needed to get a lot of very complex information into into the Economic Development Administration. So I guess this is a good example of how a well motivated team can band together and get a project put together and a grant program put together in in short fashion. So we're not quite there yet. We we haven't cashed the check, but we're we're looking forward to working with EDA to get this project done. And then finally, I want to do a couple of small company highlights. Very innovative, good companies that are here in Burlington that are doing great things. And the first one is is Resolute Elevator. Now elevator companies don't sound that interesting or possibly sexy, but this is certainly an innovative company in that they develop and build modular elevator systems within the building and then ship them to the site and then drop them into the elevator shaft in a crane. Resolute Elevator did the Hall River Mill and the Revolution Mill and several other historic mills. Because their modular product is customizable, you can fit it into these old elevator shafts that are of different sizes. They can convert a freight elevator into a passenger elevator and they also service different elevators throughout the the region. They are women owned and a small, medium sized business. They're located in Burlington off of, I think it's Lear Lear Drive in the airport industrial park area. And they just completed a a large expansion. So now they can manufacture everything on house. They built a nice crane way to travel it all. And our building and inspections department worked very closely with them to get this this project done. This was an existing business project that had to work into our new unified development ordinance. So there were certainly some interesting moments in throughout the project, but kudos to our staff and to the folks at Resolute Elevator for working together to get this great expansion project done. I just couldn't be more pleased with the product they put together and and this project. And then another innovative company that's done some excellent things in the last year is BN Nano. Now, this is going to be interesting deal. BN Nano, they manufacture a microscopic powder called a Boron Nitride Nano Tube. Now, this is nano science. So this is on the microscopic level. This is essentially a powder that you can add to other metals or products, plastics, whatever it might be, even 3D printed or additive manufacturing style. And it makes it much stronger. It adds insulation prop properties to the material. It's just really cutting edge materials science stuff that's happening here in Burlington. And Steve and Jason, the the founders and owners of this business have been fantastic. They recently got a global business award for their leadership and innovation. And they also have a patent pending for this aluminum alloy that was developed using their their Nano Barb trademarked Nano Tube product. So the applications for what's being manufactured through this company and here in Burlington are endless. It's to, I mean, you could probably hear the excitement in my voice at the type of innovation that they're doing here. So I was really excited to share the opportunities for this company. They're again a small business here in Burlington. They're operating out of a former textile mill. I mean, I think we've heard this story before. And they're just moving right along their path of innovation. Ourselves, the Alamance Chamber and others are supporting them along their way. And we meet and talk to them regularly about their needs. It's just been a great company and a great story. And I wanted to to share the innovation that was happening here in our backyard with y'all. That concludes my presentation and update on where we're at with COVID and some other things happening with projects. I'd be happy to take any questions y'all have at this time.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions from council?
Sounds busy. It's a good thing.
Yes, most certainly is.
It's always good to hear positive success stories even among the pandemic. So businesses find a way to prosper.
Yes, they do.
Any other questions, comments from council? All right, Peter, we appreciate your time. We're going to keep on rolling because we still got a good amount to do tonight. Item D on our agenda, our community development CDBG CV funds. This time I'd like to recognize Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun.
Okay, I'm gonna, I have several comments, but I'm gonna cut right to the point of CV funds. We've already done this once with our initial allocation of CV funds from CARES. It's great news to back there with Peter's news. We've been allocated additional $344,000 for Burlington. Same use for those would be COVID related response. I would suggest and recommend in that you do have a cover form there, a recommendation is to apply those funds in the same manner as we did the original funding. The original funding was about 277,000. With that continuation process, we are hitting the most need, the most nonprofits that can get that money out to our individuals. We would also open it back up to an RFP process for the nonprofits. So everyone, even those that may not have funds now can submit those proposals. We would do the same process with that. So it will be open. From that perspective, we would apply funds to our utility services as we did last time. And we'd also apply funds to the Economic Development Micro Enterprise Loans. And you have that breakdown in your packet. And I can share my screen if we need to do that. Whoever gave me that.
Council want a further presentation on that or is that amenable to council?
I can answer any questions. I'm just offering the summary of that.
Bob, Harold.
You you mentioned that some of these funds were available for for nonprofits, Mike?
Yes, the same as it was before. We went through an RFP process, nonprofits could could apply, which they did last time. Allied Churches, City Gate, any any nonprofit can apply with it's a, you know, tell us what your program is. Make sure it it conforms with the guidelines and that you will comply with the reporting. And then we bring that back. We would bring that back to council with a budget amendment, an amendment to the consolidated plan as well. And that would be in November.
Mike, I believe last time we tried to get funding to everyone who applied and tried to spread the funds widely to get those out there, but also those folks could reapply for more funds for different programs, but also new organizations could also apply, correct?
That's what I'm recommending. Yes, that way it's it's open again. And we go through the same process we've already gone through. We're already set up for documentation verification type process for those that are existing and or any new ones we would have. For those that are existing and or any new ones we would have.
Have you gotten gotten any sense of the impact of those dollars?
The nonprofits tremendous impact as far as getting those out to their agencies. Just some quick notes on that. We have almost, we've spent about $70,000. 4,000 of that have been utility payments. The rest have been through nonprofit dispersments. We've had 30 cases. Funded through our nonprofits. City accounts, we've assisted with 18 accounts for utility funds.
Any other council questions on that? Otherwise, a budget memo is requested for the November 3rd, 2020 city council meeting.
And Mayor, I know we're running late this evening, so we we've got a month to continue this conversation and answer questions.
Bob, I think you're on mute if you're.
Okay.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I have one question. Mike, is this open now? Another.
I'll open well, like probably tomorrow, Wednesday. I'll send out the RFP to our nonprofit list and we'll advertise it. I have not done anything yet. I wanted to present it tonight.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Harden, did you want to?
Yes, I just said we. I lost my train of thought. Sorry.
We, we have time, I think between now and November 3rd, if something. Some idea or concept comes up, I think that's what you were saying Harden, we can adjust as well. Just as long as it's COVID related, which I think last time was why I recommend this, we had, we hit all seemed to hit all the areas of need. That we've that's been communicated to us. I mean, obviously we can have new nonprofits, but as far as our allocation of funds to areas. It seems to be what the community, community needs.
I'd be curious to see how that need has evolved as we hit this stage in the pandemic and we're now looking at extended housing challenges. Other pieces.
I'll try to get some specific from our nonprofits that we've assisted.
Very good. Counsel, any other questions on item D? All right. Item E on our agenda, chicken and fowl update. This time I'd like to recognize our planning manager Conrad O'Meadle.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. If I can, let me see, I'll share my screen here.
There we go.
You're able to see this presentation. Okay. Tonight will be staff will be providing you with an update of some research and some public surveys that we have conducted as staff. Joining me in this presentation is Morgan Lassiter and Jessica Reyes. So what I'd like to, let me see if I can move this. What I'd like to do is just give you a quick introduction, brief, a presentation of the research that was conducted. Presentation of survey results with with Morgan presenting and then discussion guidance and any further direction council may have. So just for a quick background, the city has an existing ordinance that prohibits chickens within city limits that was done in 2006. And most recently, staff has been asked to conduct some research and report back to council, which is what we're doing right now. So the research conducted involved looking into ordinances, existing city codes, making phone calls to some of the planning departments around the state. And we we looked at over, we looked at 27 cities, not including Burlington, around North Carolina. And. Determined whether or not chickens were permitted in in their city limits. Without further ado, the the results are that. One city does not allow chickens. And 26 chicken, 26 cities do allow chickens. So 27 cities in total were looked at. Out of the 26, five of the cities require a permit. But otherwise they're regulated through the code of their ordinances. Oops. In order to. Get some more understanding of the health and just the logistics behind chickens, staff reached out to the NC Agricultural Extension Office. Very, very helpful folks there with Lauren Langley and Eleanor Frederick helping us out. They also consulted one of their poultry experts. And overall, they're an excellent resource. It's they record, they give me some recommendations. They're saying about five to 10 hens per residence. It's common not to allow roosters. It's important to keep chickens in a well built coop. And we also touched on regulations where the the state state laws really get involved when we start to. Have off premise sales of chickens, chicken eggs and meat. But for personal consumption, not so much. They provided some health, health related information, which involved mainly the. Just kind of what I would consider common sense, health hygiene. So washing hands immediately after handling eggs and chickens. For instance, not snuggling the chicken. You know, they're not like stuffed animals. We got to be careful with them and to just make sure that you wash your hands to avoid spreading diseases. Salmonella was one of the diseases mentioned as well. Well, that's been brought up by council. To supplement information from the NCI Extension Office. We did get a chance to get some information from Miss Betsy Meeks from Alamance County Health. And was able to provide some, some more kind of food related. Background of chickens and eggs. And what's noticed that one in 100 eggs would have has a bacteria. Of salmonella would be found in one in 100 eggs. But there are proper measures to avoid contamination. Such as the cooking temperatures of the eggs to be at 145. Degrees Fahrenheit. Some other information there. It's about washing hands. And then again, when you go to, when you enter into the the selling of of eggs, we start to enter state regulation. Concerns. That in a nutshell concludes what I would consider an extensive amount of of looking at 27 different city codes across the state of North Carolina. And with that, I'd like to let Morgan speak to the survey results that were conducted. At the direction of council.
So we were asked to put out a survey to the community. We did that from September 8th to September 21st. That resulted in. 1,311 responses. We had that online and that was available in Spanish as well online. And then we had it here in City Hall. So folks could walk in and take it if they didn't have access to technology. And so we had some of those as well. Next slide, please. So we got the word out with our media partners as well as our own communication avenues. So you can kind of see here a little snippet of an overview of how we did that. Next slide, please. And so when we got that data back, what we can see here is some of our top pros. So we saw that in egg production enrichment for families and owners, sustainability. And then our top cons, if you'll see here, noise, smell and creating blight, neighborhood blight. Next slide, please. And so in with this survey tool, you'll see here that. 11.7% people answered that they were not residents of Burlington and 88.3% answered that they were. Next slide, please. And then I want backyard chickens in the city of Burlington. So you'll see here that there was a neutral reply at 5.3%. Strongly disagree or disagree at 34.4% and a strongly agree or agree at 60.3%. Next slide. So similar here, are you in favor of backyard chickens being allowed with the city of Burlington? So we've got a 6.6% maybe a 33.4% no. And 60% yes. Next slide, please. So council has provided this previously within our survey tool, we had an open ended response. We had about 869 open ended responses. So as you can imagine, those take a minute to read through. And there's a little graphic here that kind of captures some of the most used words in those responses. So if council. Hasn't had time to to look through those. There's definitely a lot of information in those for and against chickens. Next slide, please. So Conrad, you can take it back here.
Yes, so. That concludes the presentation and staff is available to answer any questions, including myself, Morgan and Jessica.
Questions from council? So staff, I know when in the agenda packet, you've got the chart of all the cities that do allow chickens and some of the ways that they regulate that. Not sure if you can bring that up on the screen. I thought that was interesting. Is this kind of a diversity of different? Ways.
Can you see that screen right there? My, the word document, is that what you're referring to, sir?
Still the presentation.
Okay, let's see. Let me see if I can share. I believe, is it the Excel spreadsheet, the table?
I believe so.
Okay, I think I have it right here. Is this it? This one right here?
Yeah.
Okay.
All the different cities. So there's a. You showed the map earlier, but this gives a better handle on kind of what the different cities. Seem to see as as far as how to structure ordinances. So I appreciate you putting this together.
Yeah, you're welcome.
But yeah, just when I looked over this, I definitely saw some variation based on. Just preliminary knowledge of kind of the density and the size of some of these communities. I mean, you've got Raleigh on here that. Allows for much closer to the property line than say, Kannapolis. And obviously there's some density urban differences between those communities. So. Definitely shows the wealth of ways that cities are approaching this ordinance. Any thoughts from council on? The feedback that we've received?
Well, it was quite a lot of feedback. Was amazed at the number of people who responded. It's still a very difficult question. There are a lot of people who seem very interested in having chickens. When I looked at the chart of the different cities, I thought that Davidson had a very reasonable. Idea about how to how to allow it. And I'd like to hear how others felt about it too.
Bob Harold, thoughts?
Well, I think the devil's in the details here in terms of Kathy just indicated is what fits what community. I am obviously I'm not. I think the concept here of. I think Jess is online. Jess needs to be. Important to this. One concept is if you do this, who's going to enforce rules and regulations? Who's going to respond to to questions or issues that we have? And I'm just basing this on past experience back before 2006. I I read and I understood the concept of many people was talking about that chickens would eliminate ticks and. Other rodents or whatever. But it is I understand this, we're not talking about free range chickens in any part of this proposal. Which runs loose. You've got a coop that they would be. Located in. The. I thought the Greensboro ordinance. Some degree was interesting also in reference to a limitation. Of a number of chickens and absolutely no roosters at all. I I did see some people talking about how they thought that chickens. Even their waste could produce nitrogen, which would be good for the yards. Again, I don't think we're talking about free range, but my concern about that would be is is we face out water quality issues. Additional nitrogen is not something that we certainly need to run off into our water itself. How much that would be, I can't speak to that. I I still believe there's issues with noise. I think there are going to be issues with some predators that that frankly. We may not have as much now of, I mean, there's some in the city, obviously, as this, as we have began to become more. Development has grown, we're seeing more animals come into the city in terms of predators, but. I I think, you know, this, this thing has got to come back to. What we're looking to allow. I believe that some people. I believe that this individuals that could will monitor this would could be fine. I think there's some other situations which I'm not sure. How the neighbors are going to get along with it. I think density becomes a real issue in terms of. Some of our subdivisions. How close that the chickens are to if the coop is in the backyard, how close it is to adjacent property. And how we. Who is going to handle the calls and the concerns that we get from neighbors who have complaints? That was a substantial issue before 2006. Especially in your more. Dense, developed areas where you had smaller lots. So that that's my main concerns with this. I just don't know if. I can't speak for anyone else, but I still have those similar concerns that I voiced early on. From my past experience, we had when we had the chickens.
Harold, were there a lot of complaints?
You know, Kathy, I can't give you a number. What I do remember, there were some really, really. How can I say this ugly complaints where there was. Real conflicts between. Certain people in neighborhoods. Hopefully that won't, wouldn't occur again, but it got to be some, some very difficult situations. We also had some situations that I mentioned where people had brought chickens in the house. Minimal housing had gone over and several places found chickens actually in the kitchen. And shelves, cabinets, there were nesting. I, I, you know, I think the actual, the idea of the eggs is very reasonable. But we also had some situations where people were beginning to. Actually kill the chickens and actually eat the the product itself. That's not, you know, that's that's certainly. Something that I'm not sure what our ordinance calls for now in terms of what we allow. In reference to animals being slaughtered in residential areas. But that created some complaints. Some neighbors who've had children and and actually saw the this, the slaughter of the animal. And it did create and I can't, I can't remember the exact number. But those are the ones that created a substantial amount of distaste in the community that got personal. Now, the rooster situation, we had numerous complaints about roosters and the noise. I will say that. So that's, that's, that's what I recall from that whole process. And I believe it was discussed. Several times and Bobby may remember this actually during council meetings. If I'm not mistaken, and that might be even the minutes from 05 and 06 me pulled up with that. I can't, you know, remember exactly, you know, it, what, how that went on, but. That's where this ordinance that we have now, that's how it came out and that takes the timeframe.
Thank you, Harold. Bob, any thoughts?
Yeah, yeah, I've got a question. I think in in a Conrad survey, if I, when he looking at it. And I'm going back to a question that Kathy had. About, you know, getting a consent of the. about, you know, getting the consent of the neighbors. You know, because, you know, if the neighbors, you know, will consent to it, you know, that's one thing, but but I don't think any of the other ordinance require any kind of consent. And that may be, it may be hard to pull off, but it's one thing about it. If you get the adjoining landowners to consent to it, that'll cut down on one potential problem. That's that that's a complaint from the neighbors. You know, if, but like I said, I don't know whether that's, you know, even feasible or not. But another question I had is is one more dealing with the enforcement of it or the administration of it. Jess, do you have the personnel now? I know it's pure speculation as to how many it would be, but what about your staffing levels? Do you have sufficient people to to go out and do permit, do annual inspections, or will that require additional help? So let me stop and let you respond.
Okay, currently, we only have two animal services field officers to cover the whole city seven days a week. That's 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. So I would be cautious about, you know, adding to their workload. You know, they're already pretty busy and pretty stretched, but at the same time, I think that there's considerations that can be made that this could be done if the council wants to move in this direction, it could be crafted in a way that perhaps didn't add a lot of extra there. The other piece of this is we're a little bit unique with how we have a standalone animal services department and some of the issues that surround the keeping of chickens are issues that we would address, such as if there's limits to numbers of chickens and the prohibition of roosters, if there was a concern about animal welfare or humane keeping of the chickens, like their well-being. The other pieces to this, such as if there were setbacks implemented or specifications for the types of coops to be used, that would be something that would be also like related to odor or noise, that would be something that Conrad and his team would work to address under the development ordinance. So how I would envision if we were to move to something like this, we would could make some updates to our existing ordinances, which we have things that reference humane conditions of care for domestic animals already. And I know in Conrad's ordinance, there's some things there referencing noise and odor that he can address. But then we would need to add in the specifics of the chickens themselves. So if there's different considerations specific to that.
At one, I got a couple of follow-up questions. What if you were to add another animal control officer, what would be? What would be, what are we looking about, looking at in terms of budget on an annual basis to add another individual?
I'm just shooting from the hip. I would definitely need to check in with Peggy and HR, but I would think a total package probably would be around 40,000 to include their salary and benefits. I may be a little off on that. But that would certainly, you know, help us. It's something that, you know, we're probably moving toward in the future as the city grows and the number of residents grow. It's certainly certainly something we'll need to start considering down the road. Recently, also, the police department kind of shifted how they're handling animal calls. So more of the non-emergency animal issues come to us rather than, you know, taking up police officers valuable time. So we can handle those directly. So that's actually been good in terms of service level that we're able to offer, but it's it's also increased the workload of those two animal control officers.
Okay, one question, this question is for Conrad. Get, you know, and doing, you know, do, I guess you're, you're Morgan, when you did the survey, are the chickens that were allowed in other cities, were they allowed citywide or are they limited to a certain zone and designations? Do you recall?
In in looking over the 27 cities that we looked at, there were, in terms of zoning played into allowances. So if you were in a residential district versus a commercial district, so there are regulations in terms of where you allow the chickens based on the zone district in the city.
Okay, do you recall which districts they were allowed in?
Of the 27, I'm just gonna blanket statement in the residential districts, they're allowed.
Okay, but office, institutional, industrial?
Not for the most part, no, because they're, they would see, they would be seen as an accessory use to a principal use that would be a residence.
Okay.
I'm gonna garner that. Sorry, sir?
And that's what it was. That's what it was couched as, as an accessory use?
I'm throwing in some, some, some words that translate how that might be applied to us, but I would, I would think that chickens kind of would be could be introduced as an accessory use to the principal use of a residence. So the, what I didn't see in any of the ordinance language was if I had a vacant lot somewhere, I can then start to have chickens in there by themselves. It would be, it's the intent, what I saw in most of these codes was I have a home, I'm a resident, and I want to have some chickens at my home. Typically, a single-family residence structure is what I would see these in.
Okay, Mayor, I think I, I think I'd answered, you know, my basic questions at this point.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, man, I'm gonna jump in. I think, I think codes enforcement may be prepared to talk a little bit about the staffing demands on codes enforcement as well. So Mr. Ward asked about the demands on the animal services staff and Jessica addressed that. But I think that would be a tag team effort. So Mike, are you prepared to do, or Conrad, who's gonna talk about that?
I think Conrad had some discussion with Chris Marland, if you want to share that, Conrad? Yeah, so I had a chance to talk with our chief code enforcement officer, Chris Marland, and in talking with him and Jess about the impacts the staff, you know, Chief Marland did let me know that he didn't feel that the response would pose a significant impact into daily, daily operations. But he did want me to let, he did say that the first thing that they would probably have enforcement issues would be with roosters because the noise, the noise complaints that would emerge from there. He he put it within the context that if I have six chickens, six hens, they're not going to be as loud as one rooster. In looking at the potential noise, that might also take some, I mean, not noise, but the smell, that might take some time also as if someone fails to maintain their their coops in a sanitary manner, the noise, the smell might kind of build over time. But the immediate expected enforcement activity would be for for roosters.
I think we also have kind of had some discussion about helping people determine setbacks. So we're gonna have to measure from property lines and that sort of thing.
I mean, our officers are equipped with equipment to assist folks to to measure from an assumed property line and to a setback, so I would assume that our officers are able to assist folks out in the field. I think we would be able to do that.
I think one thing that I did notice in some of the, in in the information provided was that that a number of communities do not allow chickens inside yards. And for reality of it is, is because they're in many ways are going to be closest to your neighboring home. So that would basically, I think Greensboro even spoke to the concept of the chicken. If they, I think there in Greensboro, chickens had to be directly behind the major structure on the lot itself, which means in the backyard now. And then, then I think certainly other communities have different options in reference to how far they need to be off property lines. They and it is going to occur at any point in time with barking dogs, I realize that, but I, Jess, I've got to ask you this question. When a chicken coop is put in a neighbor's yard, or even in your yard, if you have a dog, I mean, what, when the dog starts barking and then the call comes to animal services? How do we handle that?
I think that's a real possibility for that to happen. And so it would be happening as we address all these noise complaints with barking dogs. Those could be really tough, especially if the dogs are barking. You know, different times of the day, it's difficult sometimes to determine when they're barking. Obviously, when our officers show up, dogs are no longer barking, so we can't really witness it in person. So that's a challenge is addressing these barking dog complaints. A lot of the barking dog complaints are real neighbor disputes with each other. And oftentimes, those end up in front of a magistrate to resolve.
Yes, good. And there's something in the industry that parking dogs always know that the sound of the animal control truck and they start barking when people in.
Yeah, they recognize us and they're like, okay, I'm gonna go inside and be quiet now.
Jess was told me when they got there, the dogs never fessed up to barking either, so. That was another story in itself, but you know, I I'm one who has two dogs. I wish I could tell you if my neighbors had chickens, they wouldn't bark. But I I can't say that because they barked like it is now. And I, that is, that is my real one. That's one of the concerns that I have is that I I don't know how. I think the 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 concept of baby chickens is is great. They grow up to get big chickens. That might not be as cute as they once were, but I see what I see people's interest in it. And obviously, this survey indicates there are substantial interest. I I do think though that we, if we go forward with this and is that that's gotta be some real thought put into the issues that I believe will be created in how we manage that and handle that, just not from and I think, quite frankly, it's not gonna be nearly as much in terms of of minimal housing or inspections, it's gonna be much more towards animal services. Where I think the real issue is going to come to come towards.
I have a follow-up question, Mayor, is Jess had mentioned it's probably 40,000. I'd like to get a little more accurate notion of that figure. To me, that's, that seems low. Like I said, you, you know your business better than I do, but something I know that when you add up all of the pay overtime paid, it may be necessary, the benefits. Do you feel real comfortable with 40,000?
No, I feel like that's the minimal or base.
Okay. In other words, you get on up close between 15 and 60, you may be getting closer. That would be my notion of it. And I've seen a lot of budgets over the years. And I'm just going from what little experience I have and exposure to it and just almost any employee, you know, I don't know of any employees unless it's a part-time employee, add up all of that, you know, not even part-time, I mean, the lowest wage is going to exceed 40,000. So anyway, there's a fiscal component of this. And I think if you engage in this program, I don't think it's any question about it, we've got to add some kind of staff. I don't, I I believe, I believe that's absolutely true. So anyway, I'll get, I'll get off that point.
Just to kind of give you a statistic, I just ran a report for September. I haven't released it yet, but the average calls per service per day was 10 and a half for our field services officers, and that's two people, seven days a week.
Right.
Jess, let me ask you this. If if we get a complaint or if the chickens gets loose or if somebody wants to get rid of the chickens, will you all have a, have to take the, come and get the chickens and take them over to a to the, to the shelter somehow, or where would you put the chickens?
Yeah, that may be a scenario we run into in cases where, you know, there's an overabundance of chickens or the owner's unable to rehome them on their own, then they would need to come to the animal shelter. And so they would need to be housed at the animal shelter center, and then we would need to figure out how to find new homes for them. Sometimes that can also occur if we have, you know, if people have had hens for egg laying and they're, you know, beyond their reproductive period where they're producing eggs. And at that point, you know, they're, they'd like to rehome them. So that might be something we'll need to address there at animal services.
So would you have an adopted chicken program then?
Yeah, actually, we get a lot of interest when we do have chickens, but we're pretty creative.
There's a lot of jokes, Harold, if we follow that statement.
You, you gotta laugh at some of this, guys. I mean, let's be honest. I mean, have a little humor here.
Actually, Conrad and I've had a lot of fun working through this, so.
That is kind of an underlying theme for me is all of these animals, even children can be a nuisance when you get right down to it. But there's something for humans to learn about this. And it's an important thing to me that people in the city want to do something like this. They they want to get closer to producing their own food. And that seems really valuable to me. And so all of the problems with it, I mean, that, my, my thinking is I wouldn't want to do this because I wouldn't want to have the nuisance of it. But I, but other people don't feel that way. And I just, I guess I'm trying to be modern here. Because I think the world's different than, you know, it's almost like we've gone back to the, to the 70s when people were trying to do their own things and know how to do things. So we didn't forget how to do things. So I I'm coming from that as much as I am from the idea that it's really going to cause, it's going to cause more work for us. There's no question about it.
Yeah, I think that's a, I mean, one really valid point that's echoed in a lot of those open comment things is people talking about understanding the source of our food and that connection to it. But too, I think we, we in Burlington have had a mindset with animals, and that's reflected in when we look at that chart with all the different city ordinances, we don't require permits for dogs and cats. Some counties do. And so we've said that we want to have a lower personnel requirement, a lower touch ordinance on other pieces like this. And I don't think it's unreasonable for us to apply that to chickens. Why do chickens have to be a highly regulated piece and burden us with additional staffing when we don't do that with dogs and cats? So I think there are ways, as as staffs alluded to, that by putting together a sound ordinance that matches the existing theory that we use, we we can do this effectively. And I think in looking at the map and looking at the over 1,300 pieces of feedback, it's very clear that right now we're an outlier on the overly restrictive set of ordinances. We we ban this when many other communities have figured out a way to do this. And I don't want Burlington to be seen as backwards in this way. I think we're already seen as backwards in this way because all of our neighboring communities and many of our peer communities around the state have, are doing this. So I think to me, it shows that there, there's a way forward on this. And we've got great staff who can take the feedback we've received from the public and the experiences of communities around us and apply the Burlington lens to it and bring us back a sound policy that that helps empower those residents who want to have a chicken to have a chicken and empower those and help us live in harmony with our neighbors and and their chosen hobbies. So and I appreciate Kathy mentioning that there's, there's all kinds of things that can generate a nuisance or a challenge. I mean, sorry, our dogs bark at kids, but I'm not gonna ask my neighbors to get rid of their kids and call animal services on their kids playing next door. So and Harold, to your point, I mean, your dogs might bark at your neighbor if they get a dog. So, but we're not gonna ban dogs. So we we deal with these challenges all day long and we get through it. I appreciate our citizens raising the, their voices to say, we want the the freedom and the right to keep chickens in our community. So I I'd love to see our staff bring us a model ordinance based on what they think they can afford for a reasonable cost burden. And I think what can be done with a minimal cost burden is, as they've already mentioned, by slotting it into our existing mindset. Thoughts from counsel? Harold, are you on mute or? Thank you on mute, Harold.
Harold. He muted.
Harold, unmute.
I think the cost concept here, when you start figuring the cost of anything, it's not just the salary. You're looking at probably, I would say, between salary benefits and a and a vehicle which you'd have to probably purchase with extra people, would be about sixty-five thousand dollars a year. Might be worth it.
I think that goes back to, if we do want to require chicken permits and a burdensome process of inspecting coops or all that on a preemptive basis, then if you look, and Jess could probably speak to this, other communities who require a dog permit or an animal permit, those permit fees help to cover the cost of providing the staff member, if I'm correct, so you just, you balance those, how many people do you expect to get coops and, and require that service, and then you, just like we do with a lot of our other city fees, you balance it on an annual basis based on the demand for. Very doable. Or we could apply our existing mentality with, with animals in the city limits, which we, we do not require a permit, and we put it into other ordinances like the development code ordinances with setbacks and enforce it through code.
I'm not, I'm not trying to argue the point here, my point is, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have not only setbacks, if you, if you go that route of code, but you're also gonna have complaint resulting from animal services that's gonna have to be involved, and that's just, just a pure experience, and most people are gonna call animal services first, so, you know, that, that's just something I think, when a recommendation comes forth and a discussion of votes being made, we, we just come to grips with that and then we vote on the topic as, is, and, and go forward at some point in time, but I do think it's, it's something that needs to be recognized.
There's one other piece that I, I haven't brought up yet, which is, I think, in looking at some of these setback rules and some of the, the ways cities have approached this, I think I would like, as we go forward, to think about this from an equity mindset. In looking at some of these rules, some of the setbacks are pretty significant, and especially in an urban community, that could realistically limit this to being a very kind of wealthy hobby. If you have a hundred and fifty-foot setback, that means that you have to have a, a huge lot to be able to accommodate this, and I would want our ordinance to allow at, at least fifty percent, if not more, of our residential lots to be able to pursue this, and I think definitely more. So I would be curious to see what an equity mindset might bring for this ordinance.
But if you want, I agree with you, yeah, I agree with you on that, I think your setbacks would have to depend based on your size lots that you have, in terms of, of trying to dictate or equate upfront what the setback would be. I, I do believe, though, I, I do really do like the Greensboro concept of the setback is from the back of the house, or it's a backyard, and, and again, depending on the size lots, and I know we're no longer, there are six, are nine, are twelve, are fifteens, I know we're not into that, but that would be something I would think Conrad and his people would need to, to give a recommendation on.
And no roosters?
Yeah, I think.
No, no roosters.
We can be easily in agreement that no roosters, and even that comes from agriculture, so I think there's some very clear guidance there, there's been a lot of lessons learned over the last couple decades, so.
And I think about four chickens is about as much as most families can handle, in my opinion.
They're little, and then they get big, you're right, Kathy, and that's, if you did that, your, your coops would not have to be but so large either, which, you know, would be another situation, I think the end speaking to, in limited backyard space.
Yeah, yeah, it seems like five is a pretty common number, there's something up to ten, but I've also heard from, from some folks through the surveys and the conversations who've said it's, it's very quick to, you get a couple chickens, and you very quickly have more eggs than you can consume, so, yeah. Your neighbors might appreciate the free eggs, so not, not a bad thing to build some rapport with those neighbors if their dogs are barking and your chickens are clucking, but it's gonna be an interesting path forward. Staff, as far as a reasonable next step, obviously, Councilmember Butler is not with us tonight, but I, I hope he has a chance to review this discussion and presentation and provide you with feedback and fellow council members, but I think I would like to see a model ordinance based on kind of our discussion and our current Burlington kind of mindset towards ordinances, code, and animal services. When would a reasonable time to bring that back be? Harden, you wanna weigh in?
Yeah, like, can we, can we, Mayor, is if there's consensus from the group that that's what they want us to spend, spend time on? Other council members?
I do.
I think that, I think we, we probably need to go ahead and start putting something together, that then the, the council can vote and determine, you know, which, if they would go forward with it or not, yes, it's only a fair thing to do.
I'm open, go ahead and put something together.
Yeah.
Nolan or Mike, do you wanna respond to the time, time we would need at the staff level?
If we can get past, you know, get through the twentieth with our UGO, and you've already said something for December or January, what was that? I forgot what that was, Mayor, you asked for something else in the work session.
That was food trucks.
Food truck, yeah, so maybe some priority, or, I mean, those are big topics.
I mean, I think food truck was something we brought up tonight, or I brought up, I would say, because the community's already heavily involved in this discussion, this would take priority.
Okay, well, that's helpful, yeah, I mean, we could probably insert that in, in December or.
Would it be reasonable to bring it back in a November work session, to bring a template for some?
I, I was hearing Mike say the December work session.
I was gonna look at the calendar, do we just have one?
We have a November second work session, and then December seventh is the work session.
I think that would be a better goal.
December seventh.
For what we have, yes, and for us to do this kind of research, I mean, we did a great job with Conrad and Jess and Morgan, I mean, it was a lot of work, a lot, a lot of stuff, so if you could give us a few more weeks, we, we might can breathe a little more.
Okay.
We'll also need to see how it's gonna affect our animal ordinance as well, so it'll be in two places if this gets addressed, so we'll need to be sure that those tie in together and complement each other.
Frankly, if people going out and buying baby chickens is, the dead of the winter is not the best time either, but that's, that's just another from past experience.
Give them some time to build a coop.
Yeah.
Before the spring Easter season with chickens.
So we'll, Mayor, we'll come back with a model ordinance with also linkage and discussion about what amendments need to be made to our other animal ordinances, we'll plan that for December seventh.
Sounds good. Any other council questions, comments, feedback? I, I do want to extend a, a thank you, one, to staff for doing the public outreach on this, and two, to the public for your responses, again, thirteen hundred and eleven responses is incredible, so we appreciate folks taking the time to fill out that survey, I, I think, I'm not alone in speaking, this really helps us make more informed decisions when we have this level of, of community feedback, especially the specifics, so those who took time to write letters, either in support or opposition, that, that helps us better understand the, the whole narrative and how folks wish to, to live in their communities and respect each other's property, so we appreciate that. All right. Item F on our agenda, boards and commissions reports, this time we'll recognize Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council, let me see if I can share my screen real quickly. Look while I talk, does everybody see that, is that large enough?
Yep, you got it.
This is a rezoning request, rezoned point four-five acre parcel from heavy industrial to general business, this property is located at the intersection of Hanover Road and South Graham Hope Dale Road, just down from the, the baseball and Fairchild, if you're not familiar with this area.
Corner from the old car wash.
Yes, yep. Traditional rezoning, there's no conditions or development information included, all the uses of general business district would be allowed. P and Z reviewed the request and recommended approval at the September thirty meeting, the property owner will be at the twenty, October twentieth public hearing when council considers this request. That's all I have on this, I can answer any questions, again, it's, it's compatible with the cop plan and does have staff support.
Is this a straight rezoning, or?
It is straight rezoning, general business, from heavy industrial to general business.
This has been, kind of been general business.
It, it has, it's had several uses, I think the last use was in two, the formal last use was two thousand and sixteen, utility-wise, but yes, there's been several, there's convenience store, gas station years ago, it's been several things on that corner.
Okay. Council, any other questions?
No. Fine, I went out there.
And that'll be, so any objection to October hearing on that?
No.
No.
October twentieth, all right, Mike, anything else for us?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank goodness, we have a long one tonight, I appreciate everyone sticking with us. Harden, have you got any, anything for us?
Oh, thank you.
All right, council, any further comments, questions?
I really thought, I thought this discussion was gonna be funnier, I'm a little disappointed in you.
It, it'll get funnier. It will.
All right, I will expect your A-game for jokes and funny tomorrow, so.
Good night.
Good night.
Take care.
Join until seven PM for council tomorrow night, thank you.
All right. Bye.